Call the Board of Trustees, the Village of Weston, meeting to order. And if it all stands for a pledge of allegiance to play. I pledge allegiance to the play in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all so much. We'll call.
Maloney.
Here.
Sodomy.
Here.
Craven.
Here.
Sonny. You're pretty here.
You're present. We are all here. Public comments, I've got a few things here. But, and we also have their hand up on social media. A chance, Nate, no? And if, I've got two here that I'm gonna go with first. And then if there's any more in the room here, we can certainly go with that. So, let's see. So this message is from Dustin Breland, from Breland and Associates, to one of our trustees. And the subject is chickens. Hey Jim, I hope all is well, I'm glad you got on the Board of Trustees and are working on fixing the village from the inside. I would love to be able to have chickens at my house. Thank you Dustin Breland. So that's one, I'll have that over to the clerk's side in a second. And we have another one here for Ryan Cartwright, sixty-five oh three, Altaverton Street, chicken ordinance, do you wish to make an oral statement? Yes. And position these in support, so Ryan, are you here tonight?
I'm here.
Yep, you wanna come on up to the table here and just state your name and address.
Do I get a microphone or anything?
Nope, I, my phone dropped in the green thing there?
Oh yeah.
So you don't need to look up there, they grab you. So, this is just for fake, it makes me feel good, cuz I'm older.
Makes you feel important.
So, yeah, yeah, so. Your name and address.
My name's Ryan Cartwright.
Okay.
And I live at six oh five, six five oh three, Altaverton.
Okay. And you can sit towards the end, whatever you want to.
Okay.
Okay?
Well.
Go ahead.
How long do I have?
You have four minutes and fifty-nine seconds to the team. And you started fifteen seconds ago.
So we just, we moved to Weston.
We could go back and forth.
We moved to Weston a year ago.
Okay.
And back in twenty twenty, when my family was living in Madison, right before COVID, we had five kids, and we went to a pig farm, and we picked out four little chicks. That became dear family pets for my kids. I'm a pastor at Medea Lutheran Church, on Old Custom Lane here in Weston, and I took the position last year. We moved up, and I know it might sound strange to you, but we were actually living outside the village because of the ordinance. We lived in the country, we lived in Wausau, you know how hard it is to find a house right now. We wanted to live in Weston because it makes the most sense. I wanna be part of this community, this is where my church is. So we bought a house against the wishes of our kids, we moved in, and we've been living without our chickens, they're in Green Bay at my sister-in-law's house right now. So I'm working through the process of changing the ordinance to what I hope would be a reasonable chicken ordinance here in Weston. I submitted a letter, and you may have seen me on the news, that's because the news combs through public documents, I guess, and they found my phone number and they called me. I did not seek to be forgotten this last Monday. I'm here because I know that this was brought up in two thousand seventeen, and it cost two hundred dollars to make the application. Believe it or not, as a family of seven, two hundred dollars is no small amount. And I just wanna be sure that should I go through with the application, there would be a fair hearing, a public input on the question of chickens in Weston. Specifically, a fair and a reasonable ordinance. Looking at the documents that make up the planning commissions, you know, what they're hoping to accomplish, it says in the Weston's comprehensive plan, in Weston, it's time to welcome families. Understand that my family may be the first that said, hey, we have chickens that are separated from my kids right now, we moved to Weston, but we're not gonna be the last. You probably know, or you should know, that Weston's part of a shrinking minority of municipalities in Wisconsin that has no allowance for chickens in town. I'll read a couple of that too, but this is not an exhaustive list. Appleton, Nino, Clare, La Crosse, Green Bay, Oshkosh, Wisconsin Rapids, closer to home, Wausau, Stevens Point, Antigo, River Mountain, they all have ordinances that allow for chickens. And I would hope that you would be willing to listen to the experience of these other municipalities. This is not a crazy thing, this is not a grand experiment, this is what's happening. And it's what's happening, especially among younger people that have an interest in teaching their children responsibility, where does food come from? In having a source of food from your pets? And it's really been a wonderful thing. You may have had bad experiences with chicken, I don't know. I don't know what the board's experience has been. I would just suggest that if you've had a bad experience, it wasn't with chickens, it was with bad chicken owners. And if it happened here in Weston, ask yourself, did the ordinance to have no chickens stop that? An ordinance is for people who are honest and follow ordinances. And I would hope that that's brought into effect. If we were discussing whether or not dogs were allowed, and you had an irresponsible pet owner who had their dog drop a deposit in your front yard every day, you would be against having dogs in town. But the problem is not the dogs, it's irresponsible owners. And a reasonable chicken ordinance would actually allow, giving expectations for what it would look like. And it would, you put in sort of things like neighbor's consent, so that those kinds of questions about, you know, I've had this bad experience, could be handled case by case. You know, you've heard the saying, it's better to ask for forgiveness than permission. You know why that saying exists? Because things can be overthought, they can be overanalyzed, it can be paralysis by analysis. There's not gonna be a chicken apocalypse. There's not gonna be a huge bunch of crunch because of chickens. I am doing the harder thing, and that is asking for permission. And I'm hoping that if the planning commission would pass it on to the board, there would be a fair and open discussion about chickens in Weston.
Give a little bit more time. I like listening to you. You could preach to me anytime. And I'm not making fun of this at all. So, so what do you give them on again?
Six five oh three, Altaverton.
Altaverton, okay, this really isn't the answer, you know, question type. You know, it's just a public comment. But to your question, a fair to the board? Or are we gonna go back to the plan? No, come to the board.
We'd have to go to planning.
Oh, we go to planning?
Yeah, then we have to create the ordinance. So I had, I mean, my report, the planning commission was kind of split on the topic. So they had suggested maybe doing a survey, or just kind of finding out how work felt on it.
Like, you know, some of the comments that I'm getting, I'm just gonna make a few comments here quick. Some of the comments I'm getting, just because of that last meeting, cuz it's up in the air, and the press is calling, wants to know all about our chicken deal. You know, just what's next, I mean. I mean, and I'm not trying to be sarcastic or facetious about pigs or any other animals. I don't know, you know, so.
Have any of you had backyard chickens before?
I have not, but I've got, I have two families. Not here, I don't, but I have two families of mine that are kids that have chickens, but they're all in the country. And it is a huge positive for my grandkids, huge. He has, and it was not a great experience.
In Weston?
No, from a neighbor, from a neighbor.
In Weston?
Yeah, yes.
So irresponsible neighbors that didn't follow the ordinance, didn't follow any care chicken? I'm surprised. You know, I guess that's.
Same thing with the dog thing, same thing with the dog thing.
Don't let that shade this topic, because they're gonna, irresponsible people will be irresponsible. And you guys know that. The question is, is there a reasonable path forward for responsible people who, you know, who have a very positive experience and zero problems? I mean, our lot here in Weston is two and a half times bigger than it was in Weston. And I just can't, I can't, our neighbors wouldn't even know we had them. But here we are, so.
But in your, your couple minutes there, you said consent from your neighbors. So you would, you would expect that to be in an ordinance?
Not necessarily.
No?
But I think that would lay some fears of people, that they're gonna have chickens everywhere. I think it's unsubstantiated fears, that there's gonna be explosion of chickens in Weston. There are, there are gonna be people that have them, but chicken people are weird.
We have chickens now, I mean, right? You know?
Oh yeah, we only find out about them.
Less or more, less or more than sixteen, seventeen?
More.
More? I would say the same thing, yeah, okay. I just, I mean, I remember back then, and I, I know now, but I would say we have more now.
We have more what?
More chickens now than we did back in sixteen or seventeen.
In Weston?
Yeah.
So you're saying I shouldn't ask for permission?
Nope, not at all, I thought you said it very well, about the permission and all that stuff, yeah. I respect what you're doing here.
Yeah, bubu, taffy, and poodles would like to come home. Unfortunately Pike died about a week and a half ago to my son's great sadness. Not trying to lay it on thick, but.
No, I've had.
I have to deal with the.
I've had rabbits die, and I've had a lot of burials in our yard.
I wish I could tell you that Weston had a beautiful name in our home, and our thirteen-year-old doesn't think much of Weston because of this one issue.
Are you ex-ol, or are you also, you know?
Which?
Well, I mean, so, oh, ex-ol, okay.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
There's no reasonable municipality that loves roosters.
Okay.
It's not even on the table, it's a question of hens, sheriford, and coop, and.
That's the, that's the. I've answered a question too.
I just would ask you to lean on the experience of all these other places that have done it, and have not had tremendous fallout and problems. This is not an experiment anymore, this is two thousand twenty-three, and it's pretty normal.
I think you're, another question that was, would you expect a fair? I believe it would be fair. I would believe a lot of, you know, neighbors would be in their ears for the planning commission. And if it got to this level, it'd be in our ears too. But I think, but I think it'd be fair.
The reason I'm asking that is because I knew there was a straw poll at the end of the signing commission, and I kind of felt they haven't even heard public comment. To have a closed mind when you haven't yet received feedback, or even had a chance to wrestle with it, I think that's unfair. And I don't wanna move forward, I don't wanna miss my, waste my time, my money, unless I know it's going to be a fair conversation. And I'm not saying that you have to agree with me, but I would expect that it would be a fair process.
Okay. Anyone like the males?
Well, just that, I've had experience years ago when we were AR, we had chickens. But we only had them for summer. But I've had neighbors that had chickens. One got hit on the road right in front. The biggest issue I have with them is the guy in the back of us had chickens, and we had more fox, and you name it. And our, yeah, and the fox were kind of nice, they took care of the rabbits. But when I had a fisher walk alongside me by my neighbor's yard, I wasn't too excited. And that is the issue I have.
Bring more of that, yeah.
Yeah, that they bring in families that you don't necessarily want in your backyard.
And how would you control, I mean, that control would be not a better, you know, better structure, because that, those sensors could be out there.
But that is my, that's my concern.
I would just ask that you lean on those that have had petted pets or ordinance in the town. I understand that that would be a possibility. And I don't have an answer to that. I guess that's part of it.
Are your chickens in Green Bay or on the Alstirts Green Bay?
They are in Hobart.
Yeah.
Green Bay allows chickens.
Yep, okay. So if you want, if you want them closer, I'll introduce you to a family of mine that has chickens. If that would help, I, just for this time being.
No, I appreciate, I do appreciate.
No, we, we're quick.
I was just gonna say, just to answer your question about a fair here, I mean, that it's, it's totally right, it has to be heard, you know, at the planning commission, people are allowed to come in and ski. So to answer your question, would having a fair here, I think you would. If that was what you wanted to do. I guess first, I think the purpose, I mean, it's really just a comment, so we truthfully probably shouldn't be having a whole lot of discussion on it.
Yeah, I know.
And I didn't expect any discussion, I was just putting a face with the conferences.
Okay, so, thank you, thank you. Thanks Ryan. Any more public comment? On the line or in the room, any more on public comment? That's, oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Go ahead. Just to, for everybody to know, we met this morning with Keith and I, and what she's gonna talk about, she's gonna share with the rest of us here, just for people.
Spirit. My name is Suzanne Cooper, and I live at forty-three Love and Schofield Avenue, Lot ninety-four, in Stillwater Mobile, on Main E. Thank you to Mr. Roney and Mr. Donner for meeting this morning so that we could discuss the things that are going on in this park, for the tenants, and what is happening to my husband and I. I prepared a speech, knowing about the neglect in the park. I, I don't need to tell you, any of you, what has been going on in that park. I'm sure you are very well aware of the neglect. The pets that are running around, the potholes, the size of switchcoats, the mailbox, not graded out for any of us. The mowing that's only done two times a month because there is no budget available to have that mowed. Trees that are marked, have been marked every year, but nothing gets done, and they're falling out trailers. No sign in the front, allowing anybody to know where we are located. I have in-laws that came over, come this weekend for a visit, there's no sign. Granted, they know where we are, but anybody new to come into that park would not know. There is no sign, and hasn't been for years. There's no drugs going on in that park, along with warrants for people that are active. Nothing is done. Plowing is not done in the wintertime, no salt or sand is governed until it's, there are complaints. There are sinkholes in this property, three on the front row, in between trailers that are not courted off. For anybody walking through could fall. Couple of months ago, I had cones in front of a trailer next to me, ten feet away, that I found out from my neighbor that could be a possible sinkhole. I did not find out from this from our property manager, nor property owner. Squatters in a trailer that had a fire in it. These people were living there, and from my understanding, the police came and got them out. They are still living in that trailer, around that trailer, there's a tent behind it. Constantly seeing them coming back and forth in front of our house. Last year, there was a community watch program that was implemented in the park with Mr. Eric Silver, along with the park manager, and many of us tenants who wanted to, to be good. I was there, the first couple of meetings were awesome. We talked about everything and anything that could be going on. Mr. Eric Silver helped with any related issues of things that were being stolen, any problems that we had, he listened. Mr. Schultz was against this community watch program, but we all did it anyway. There was crime that had gone down, because all of us tenants were watching and were reporting. We all had little neighborhood watch stickers on our trails to show everybody that, yes, we are watching what is going on in here. The meetings ended up becoming, excuse my language, bitch sessions, as to what is not being done in this park, that the park manager just writes down and doesn't do anything with. Eventually, I stopped going to these meetings because they were not productive in any way, shape, or form. It was all complaining about us tenants complaining to the park manager of things that were not done, and then him saying that his hands are cut. The manager, when I asked why we were not having any more, I was told that Mr. Silver was shifted to third shift, so there was no community office that was available. The office manager would not run a meeting, why? This was working so well in the beginning, only to be dropped because they don't wanna do anything. So in amongst all of that that is going on, there has been some water issues in this park. I'm not talking about sinkholes, I'm talking about discrepancy of water usage among tenants. When we first signed the lease, there was, water was included in our, in our lot rent. After a year, they decided to put sub-meters in. When they put sub-meters in, I was asking a lot of questions as to how these meters were bred and how they were built. And I had come down to the lease of the Village of Weston many, many times to talk to Teresa as to how these were supposed to be run. I had also contacted Colin Derman, who was operations manager at the time, and asked him how we were supposed to, as tenants, figure out all of this water. Well, he had given me a link to what is called Waterscope, and you are allowed to go on there and see what your water usage is. I knew first month in, our water usage was not correct. I was tracking times and, and usage of what we were using it for. Not flushing of toilets or washing hands, but of showers and laundry, bigger items like that. There was a lot of discrepancy in that Waterscope. I brought it aware to Mr. Colin Derman. I had sent him a letter in regards to all of this. Nothing was done. In May of two thousand twenty-two, Dan Wilder, property manager, was also aware of the situation.
Suzie? I'm over.
Something, nothing was ever done. So in a month, all of my water disputes end with Mr. Schultz. I was given a five-day eviction notice for a water dispute. I have contacted the ATCP, and they had got a letter from Mr. Schultz on July eleventh stating that they were working out a solution with the tenant. I received this on July twelfth, it's a five-day dish. How is that working with the tenant? I have brought this up in a meeting with Mr. Schultz face to face, and he would not discuss any of what was going on twenty months ago, nor anything current. Mr. Schultz is ripping my husband and I off along with everybody else in that mobile home park. If my meter is not correct, neither is anybody else's. And nobody from that company has done anything to check our meter, calibrate it, or anything. This gentleman is doing illegal business activities. He is not running this park correctly, he doesn't care. And like the gentleman for chickens says, "An irresponsible person will always be irresponsible." This has been going on since two thousand nineteen, back when he walked the park. He has not done anything to improve. Every year, the license comes up, and everything is always never fixed, or it's getting, degrading worse than what it is now. So I am bringing this on to your attention, so that when this comes up with anything with this park, that you be, make a responsible decision, as to all of us tenants who are living in this park. My husband and I moved here so that we could live and have a nice, just quiet life. And for the last twenty months, this has been a nightmare. That now I am going, we are going to be kicked out of our trailer for a water dispute that the owner of the company will not discuss with us. So where are our rights, and what are we just supposed to sit in this park, my husband and I slung with the other tenants, just to take everything that is, that is being thrown at us? That there are no repercussions for Mr. Schultz in anything that he has not done or not addressed? In my closing, there are three. There are three quotes that are from Mr. Schultz that I believe this kind of tells you what his true nature is. The first one is on his Facebook page, and it says, "Be greedy when they're fearful, and be fearful when they're greedy." The second one is from a mobile home university interview for a lecture series that's zero to eighty mobile homes in four years. He quote, I quote, "The amount of issues you can de-escalate just by answering the phone and just having a calm, collected conversation will always outweigh anything else in my book." The other quote, and the last one, is the thing that I love, my business, my company, is we've flown under the radar on basically everything. So I really haven't gotten any media coverage. I feel that Mr. Schultz is not only bullying the tenants, he is obviously threatening them, so people cannot stand up. They're afraid to stand up for what is not right. I will be, I will stand up for my husband and I, and I will stand up for all of my tenants in the park, because what he is doing is not correct, it's not moral, and it is illegal. So please make my story, take my story into your consideration when making any decisions on this park. I know I'm not the only one who has a story in that park. But I'm the only one that is going to stand up and tell you my story. Thank you very much.
Same, thank you. We've got some copies that Suzie left us this morning too, that I can keep that as a position for some of the stuff that she talked about today, so.
Well, you clarify, what you says, Mr. Schultz, not, I mean, this is.
Yeah, not, not him, cousin, brother, father, son. It's King Schultz, not related to our chief Schultz.
So the record reflects.
Yeah. Yeah, good point. Okay. Yep. Let's see, if, being, being done with public comments, would the board favor me in moving item forty-one up?
Please.
Since we have him in the demonstration, okay? Pete, do we wanna just start, or do you wanna bring Keith up, or what are we doing?
So I'd like to bring up forty-one, discussion and/or action amendment to development agreement for Platte, Pinner Springs First Edition Phase Two of construction, and then a bullet point construction schedule, and a bullet point of security. Okay?
So I think the main question was on security. It sounds like there was a group in October last year, September last year. And then you get to that.
Can the audience hear him? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So Platte was approved on August fifteenth of two thousand twenty-two. And the development agreement, September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. On the discussion of security at that time, there was security provided for the first phase of the construction for Nether Springs First Edition Phase One of construction. And Platte, or the board, Platte Incorporated, what was gonna be Phase One and Phase Two of construction. And the stipulation, the deal was that there would be then a resolution, you know, adopted for this approval by the board, was that when the construction was going to take place on Phase Two, then there would be security finished with that. So Keith has asked for a type of security that was not, that's not included in the development agreement. The development agreement says it would be either a bond or a re-able letter of credit. Also talks about what the amount of that security, the other, the setup construction cost estimate, and then fifteen percent of that is held after completion of improvements. That's standard language in our development agreements. Now, there's talk, we talked about whether we can do something different going on the line. I think one of the options would be to modify our, our ordinance to do this before plating. We won't be security for the entire mountain, we'll be security for fifteen percent of the mountain once it's done, but I don't know if that, if we're constructing improvements prior to approval of Platte, Platte gives you the timing that you want for being able to build. I don't know if that would set down a discussion. The village right now can't do two residential tins, although the recent legislation that the state adopted is now gonna make that possible. I think some of the things that we referenced in our email to the board, we're talking about some of those things that have been done, I know in Maryland, and maybe that's what they're talking about in March, you know, but since we've already, we have exceeded our threshold of equalized value in our in our tidsters, we have not been able to create any new ones. So this new legislation's gonna allow residential tins to be created, if that's what we want to. Those things are not in place right now. The timing isn't gonna be right for this development. So the question is, what do you want to accept as security? I think is, what we suggested, a signature bond, which, you know, refers to copy of what it might look like, I don't know what actual assets are placed in as security, and if you have an issue with the construction, we want you to have done all those kind of things. Have we had any problems with this developments? Is Michael to speak better to that? I don't know that they've had anything that's held up. Final approval of building permits or vacancies or things like that.
But don't, don't let that hang out there, yes or no?
No.
Okay, so. Okay. So, okay. I just wanted that answer. All right.
Just to decide what you want to accept is probably a more decision. I'm invite, I guess, the advice from the attorney. My advice would be that we stick with our standard requirement, but, um, I guess that is subject to your discussion and your, um, decision I'm supposed to make or if you want to keep it down the road. And more especially, Keith, uh, that Keith has some things he'd want to add here, but I guess that's also a priority if you want to have one more. Do some presentation.
Yeah, see? I don't, I don't know, I don't know what your timeline looks like, but I don't know if kicking this down goes an option. And I would agree to get this hammer out tonight.
I would agree.
What security was provided for Phase One?
Irrevocable letter of credit.
So we did have.
It's drawn down as part of, on the construction. So that was one of those points, I guess, that we draw down. Yes, that's been done. Draw the letter of credit, the amount is drawn down all the time. I know there's a cost of water credit, just like there's a cost to a bond at the performance point.
And. What do you want to change in the middle of the game? Apple project is down, butter project is down, you want to change it? I'm not sure that's the right thing to do.
So this is something that we've done consistently through all of, of the builds. But nothing has changed.
The nuance in this one is that you've adopted, I don't, both phase, entire first edition of Inner Springs. So we only, we only acquired or requested a letter of credit for the first phase of construction.
Who requested only half of it?
We did a repeat with the village.
So we only wanted it for the first half. We only wanted it for the first half.
We had a discussion, you know, the discussion about this last fall, those, you know, minutes from the meeting reflected that.
But is it something we asked for or is it something normal? Is it consistent with other builds? It's not normal.
No.
Normally, you would come to the board with the letter of credit for the whole shoot.
Phase one, we've done the eight phases. So a plan exists, lots exist. You know, I, I think, I don't know, maybe you can go on a point. What, what is the security in the signature bond?
Are you asking me? Yeah. My signature. It's just like a signature bond to get out of jail, just.
And that's, and that's, I think, what those are typically purchased for, right?
I don't know that. I, so to answer your question about the two phases, so we did have this discussion last year. And I did receive a email from Keith saying that I always bring this up at the eleventh hour, but this is probably six or seventh year that I've been asking for something other than an irrevocable letter of credit or bond because the village of Weston that I've worked with is the only place that requires it. So, um, I, so it's not the last meeting, it's just, I, I, and I've been asking for on this subdivision for a few months. So here we are at the eleventh hour and I'm being pointed at as the guy that's bringing up at the eleventh hour. So I don't, I don't know what's going on with, um, legislature that's going to change this, but if it's going to be better for future developers, that's all the more reason to do it now because I'm competing. When I, when I redid the subdivision, by which stakehouse, I don't know what that subdivision is called. That subdivision was in foreclosure. The village did nothing about it with their irrevocable letter of credit. They didn't fix it. I fixed it. My cost on those lots, the developed lots, I paid between fourteen and eighteen thousand dollars a lot. I redeveloped the complete mess. I, I had, everything was scoped, everything, it was more expensive to fix it with improvements in the ground than it, than it was if it would have been raw land. Twenty-five thousand dollars a lot, that was my lot cost. Inner Springs, my lot cost is, is somewhere between forty and fifty thousand. My single-family residential lots are closer to fifty thousand. So I'm asking for some relief in those expenses. I'm saying for me to spend eighteen thousand dollars, I go to a bank, I pay for a bond eighteen thousand dollars. And, and they're saying, hey, your, your signature and your eighteen thousand dollars is good. That we're going to guarantee this letter of credit for one point two million, one point eight million, whatever it is. So why can't I just do that with the village and not pay the eighteen thousand dollars? It's, it's, I have, I have a loan with the total amount to improve the property. When I, when I do a draw request with the village of Weston, it takes two weeks for my contractor to get paid. My bank's got to approve it, the title company's got to approve it, the village of Weston's got to approve it. You go through this, this, jumping through these plenty hoops to get a six hundred thousand dollar approved loan, approved payment because of the irrevocable letter of credit. I, I don't, I don't need an irrevocable letter of credit. I got the money. I, I have the loan.
So we did not, you did not have a letter of credit on.
On what?
Which you did not have a letter of credit. So you got done.
There was no bond there?
No.
So you just, I thought you just said that you didn't have, you, you always done it on all your subdivisions. It's not in the developer's agreement?
Sometimes you get far.
So hold, hold, are you, are you referring to him burning us?
No.
Well, then, well, who, yeah, but you, without saying a name? I mean, you, you're making everyone feel like, I, I don't know what you're talking about. So it's, so he is, well, good for you. I don't. All right. So I'm going to ask the question. So he did not burn us?
Forsyth did.
Forsyth did. Okay. Braskin did, Forsyth did, all that, Keenan Schultz did. Yeah. Okay. I got all that.
I don't even think that's fair.
So he did. Okay. Will you? Keith, when you said you had, you had handsome correspondent, you'd, you'd been asking this question for a few months. Well, he's been asking for six years. Every project, who are you even talking about? I have Keith or Jen or, I'm curious.
It's been pointed out though, we've had this very discussion. Yeah, well, the fact that we can't do residential tips, so are we have no, no options. We're not, we're not given other options.
It's not about the tip, it's about the.
Well, it's, it's about a way to, to do this. We've also talked about us special assessments, you know, the financing infrastructure. That's another option. We, we have talked about that.
I've seen, I've talked about using the land that were development as the, um, collateral for the subdivision as opposed to, because it's there. You know, so the risk right now is you're, you're asking what the, the second phase is recording and there is no money. And, and, and I'm not holding this over your head, but that is actually, that, that Keith was recommending against that. And the board proved it because I was only going to develop half the subdivision because we didn't know what, what the, you know, I wish I would have done the whole thing last year. I didn't know I was, that, that the market was not going to slow down potentially until this fall or next year. And so I'm now taking another leap of faith. It was very, you know, so it's just that, that twelve to eighteen thousand dollars, it, it's, 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 you know, this guy talks about two hundred dollars being a lot. You have five or seven or a thousand dollars to a lot cost. And then your interest rates are, are jumping to eight percent on short-term commercial lending. That, that's what I was quoted today. You, you, you're, I'm just trying to, to do anything I can to, you know, and we talked, you talked about tips, but you, you do have policies in place where we're, you know, we talked about the landscaping trees and the, you know, all that stuff adds up. And I, and I, and the sidewalks, I say the same thing every meeting. So Keith, would you be comfortable with, I, my take on this is we want protection from the village residents, right? So don't take this wrong way. Hey, you're a guy, I haven't seen any bad development, if you will, and that you've done long for the village, right? But clearly other developers have, right? And, and you demonstrate that you've made that right for us. That's awesome. You're the kind of developer that we want to. So how would we look out for the interest of, of residents? What happened if you took over and all, right? So i- is there a way? I don't know. Can, can you, like you had mentioned, uh, put the builder's name on the, on the land or, or something until it's developed and then we sign off on it? What would a, an acceptable way be for that? Because clearly you don't want us to own that land, right? You can't develop it or, or like. Then we've got to see in the game what we all do, right? Right? If, if you defaulted, at least in the village, it don't land and we could find another developer and solve the thing or whichever way for, like you said, walk away. I'm not saying that we're going to do that, but looking ultimately at the interests of the residents. What would that look like? I just. So, so to avoid the whole letter of credit thing, I just, I, I think that you can require your developers, just like the bank. Why is the bank giving me five million dollars to develop the subdivision? It's, it's, it's not, it's because I have the ability to do it. They look at my credit score, but just like you won't give a who. And, and if we have the ability to do that, you can check into that. I mean, I, I don't understand why I'm trying to figure out how you can make your fund better. I, I honestly don't, I, I'm, I don't understand, I don't understand that. Like, I don't understand why I, I would, like, like Keith asked me if I could present something and I'm like, I, I wish you presented something to me that would make it more attractive to me.
I don't, I don't. Sign some agreement that says, I mean, I don't, and helps develop and sign off and Michael gives you your.
So anyhow, the land is yours.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Yeah.
The right of way is yours.
Does it, does that, yeah. Yeah. I know. Why, why, why can't we just look at what other municipalities are, why does this have to be the spiral? So let's look at what Corona might be doing. Let's look at what now is doing in Marchville.
The right of way is ours, but, okay, so the right of way becomes ours, then we're in the same board with, with that other development, right? But what if all the lots belong to us?
Yeah, but what, I guess, you know, are we throwing all the contractors, all the contractors into, you know, Forsyth and Braskin and all that? I mean, just because, we had one or two. How, how many have you built so far? How, how many?
In Inner Springs?
No, no, just, just you. You, you came here, uh, it's the inner, the inner city one that, that you rescued over by the water tower by Renaissance.
We built probably eight hundred houses and seventy-five percent of what we sell is food.
Yep.
So I, I don't know.
Is that, is that including back where I live? Is, is with your brother and your dad too?
I didn't do that, no.
I, I know, but, but that, your family did.
That's, that's who I.
That's seven hundred more houses. So you've done eight hundred yourself.
Yes.
Right?
But the, the point is, is like, like even, even Dean, i- i- if, if the economy goes poor all the time next January, we don't have any of this. Lots go from value of fifty-five thousand down to thirty thousand and I can't develop them, it's going to be the same thing that happened to you.
Yeah.
The irrevocable letter of credit is, I mean, I'm, I'm going to have some reason to done by that, but.
And you talked to Braskin, but you brought up Forsyth.
Cause I bought a lot, I bought tons of lots on the front.
Right, right.
And I, and, and, and I, that's what's going to happen. And, but you can't, you can't force the economy. The economy's, Weston didn't do anything about it.
Right.
You guys did nothing about it. That land sat there. I talked to Inner City, the data foreclosed on it and I talked to them every month for two and a half or three years until I bought every lot over, almost every lot.
How many, how many houses did Forsyth build? All part of.
I don't know. I would say, I, I'm guessing, I would say a thousand.
Okay.
Forsyth builders, same thing, thousand, I mean, you know what they call Taffeyville?
Right.
That's eight hundred plus homes.
Yep.
Just that subdivision.
Yeah, just.
It's, it's just, it's, I'm, I don't know, like, it doesn't have to be complicated.
Yeah.
You can get, you can see that the bank had, that I have the ability to borrow one point two million. You can ask Randy at Inner City that, that we have to approve every payment. And, and so you can control that payment. It doesn't need to be irrevocable. It's, I have a letter of credit. An irrevocable, that, that one word costs me eighteen thousand bucks.
I know. And, yeah. And your, your, your ask is why if I don't have it?
And to your point, you can, you can, you can say, we'll take, um, one million dollars worth of lots as security and then we'll release those. We'll release those as you pay it down.
Would you be okay with that? Would you be opposed to that?
That's how we did it in the city of Austin. I wouldn't be opposed to it. I'd rather not do it because then, but I, but I can figure that out.
But you'd rather do that than pay the.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. I, I would too. I'm against it, you know. I think that's stupid, but at the same, same time like we have to.
Yeah, because the flats are recorded, so you, you can have that. I, I don't know what position you could have. It could be the secondary position or the first position. I'd have to work that out with Randy and with the loan, but.
Yeah, banks would not, uh, the bank always stay the first. So they're not going to let us have the first.
They're not going to let you have the first?
No.
I don't know. I, I did it in.
Well, you see, the thing is, you don't apparently take your right. There's no need to rush it, they, and they have done it all, all over distance facts. And the same thing, if you have the second position, you're not getting any.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't, I don't, I would think Washington would have had it in primary position on that. Back then, so I found no subdivision.
Bank is always special position.
Well, why don't we pursue that though? Why not?
Yeah.
So because our attorney's advice that we don't want to own the land, we want to own the land, but you know that.
They're not going to own any land.
It's security.
Well. I think we should.
We don't own land.
So, so there's two things here. One, we can't kick this again anymore. We don't have to set for you now tonight, period. Um, and second off, we need to explore these other topics, this whole.
We have already done and then we'll prepare.
Well, not, not over time. Like this needs to be an agenda item for next month and have attorney duty here and let's, let's figure out a solution because maybe it's not Keith sitting there, maybe it's someone else who's not as patient, he just goes away. Cause if you guys can pick and it can't.
Another thing that we learned last, last year, I didn't know until last year in the August meetings was the board has the right to approve the bond. So it's, it's an approvable bond by the village board. And I was always under the impression that it had to be in the irrevocable letter of credit. It doesn't, it's just any bond that's approved by the board.
There's two forms of security that reference them as well, like a bond, an irrevocable letter of credit. There used to be ordinance in the, in the subdivision ordinance that said other form of security acceptable award. That's not in there.
That was in the.
It's been several years ago. That was changed.
So what is it now?
Irrevocable letter of credit or a bond.
Is required?
Yes.
That's in the ordinance?
Yeah.
What's the bond cost you?
Eighteen thousand. One percent. One percent of.
Eighteen thousand either way. If it's not a bond or a letter of.
Yeah, I have, uh, so Suzie, I have helped the company ask what they do, they, it's one percent.
So for a bond, you have to purchase some assets that will have collateral, correct?
I just, I just signed a bond with pay of eighteen thousand bucks.
Well, we have, we did have an experience where we had them go on to a performance plan. We made a claim on a performance plan, it's a proven, it's on a different subdivision. And that was what was involved, as I recall.
So, well, I, I, I'm just going to say this, I would roll the dice every day with this company. Uh, this, this village, this staff, some of these board members have rolled the dice on a lot of things that have not meant anything and that have lost. We, we lost our shirt tying, uh, attorney's fees with this whole fiasco on Camp Phillips and Weston Avenue. And we were so sure that was going to work. And, uh, that was an absolute, uh, that, we should have wrote a book on, on how to do failure and how to, uh, roll the dice and, and have hope. We've got eight hundred homes here by this developer and, uh, we asked him to come back and start building here by you. We asked him, we invited him to come back and start building back here and I will roll the dice with him every day. And that's where, I, I just want to know where we're going here.
Keith, would you be comfortable with that security or signature bond, if it was tied to some form of asset? With like some of the lots or whichever?
I mean, yeah, I, I don't know what my options are.
To save the eighteen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know what the amount needs to be. It has maybe the fifteen percent or does it have to be over the fifteen percent?
That's a good question.
If I have a loan and you control the drops, why does that have to be an irrevocable letter? Why not just the fifteen percent? Until, until it's approved and warranty's up?
Fifteen percent would be after completion.
The hundred, the first hundred percent is going to, you do it fifteen percent after the fact is warranty stuff, is that correct?
The hundred, the first hundred percent is going to, you do it fifteen percent after the fact, it's warranty stuff, is that correct?
I just don't under, I, I don't understand. I, I buy it all in. I dedicate the right of way, I improve it. And then I have to, I ha- I have to double up on my, you're making me double up on my security. I, I, I have the money to develop it. The, the one, I, I don't know what this project is, if this, if this one's one point two million or one point eight million. Um, whatever that number is. And then I have to guarantee it. Like, I have to, I have to have double the amount to guarantee it. It's like, how about just the fifteen percent? And as a, I, I just, I don't know what the risk is. This, this. An attorney's gonna, gonna take everything they can take. I'm like, you know, I can't give anymore. I, I got eight children and I got my blood, I got my wife. I got chickens. You can have my chickens.
Not Weston, you can't. He's gonna ask for.
Not in the village.
Yeah.
Um, anyhow, I, I'm just trying to. Keep it, keep it real.
What's our thoughts here? Let's, let's move this. What's, what's our thoughts?
I, I could go to the signature bond, if. It can get tied to a something.
I would be.
Whether it's tied to a loan, whether it's tied to a something, make sure attorney E can find some way to link those together.
From, I know, attorney E the advice is, it's, you know, we're always not, um, you know, taking that advice with the self powers and that. And the, the contracts out on the highway and stuff, so, um, yeah, I wanna hear the advice, but. You're still up to this board, so I would be inclined to do the same thing.
I would too.
What's?
I'd also like to see an agenda item.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To, to change the ordinance. So what, what's?
I need to be in line with, we need to be in line with what other communities are doing.
So what do we do? Does somebody want to offer up, uh? Yep, okay. Well, I'd rather have it there anyway.
Well, you can give it back to us.
Yeah, yeah, that's funny. So am I hearing any action yet?
Let me make a motion to allow this development, same spring space two, um. Based on the. Signature bond. Or is it one fifteen or one point?
One fifteen, it says?
Or one hundred and twenty percent, the estimated goals for complete public control events. In spring phase two.
All right, we have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Second on the, by Cronin. Any more in the discussion?
Question. What is that signature bond, um, tied to?
The loan that he has for one, one million dollars to manage the project. So would that be approved? So banks part of it, or where's the village?
Say the, take the, yeah, for that, say everything goes like the good days back. All of a sudden land is worth like half if not less. And just puts a hold on, you've got.
But he has a loan for one point eight nine dollars to put to in modern sheets, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So if he already has a loan for that.
I have, I have the, um, I, I haven't signed the loan documents. I have the approval for the loan.
Yep.
Pre-approval already.
Okay.
So even a, attorney come here and work on it, some sort of smooch it.
Uh, that's for the future.
That's for the future.
Up now.
If you want to start growing in August, that's thirteen days away.
Any more in the discussion? Hearing, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So we have two noes and five ayes.
Or blame.
And Hushay, uh, Scotty. Uh, so Kerry. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you be willing to work with us next month to try and find something that's developer friendly, builder friendly and next to residence and like to go through?
We'll buy lunch.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move it back here to, uh, minutes from previous meeting.
Mark, do we, we have two agenda items.
Oh, wait, 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 wait.
I see two different.
Uh, where do you see?
Well, there's two different.
It was a matter of magic.
What's that?
See the one on the construction schedule? And the security, but there's another, there's another agenda item to go there. I don't know if it can be separate or.
Where are you seeing that?
I'm in the packet.
Oh, you're in the packet? Okay. Yeah, but where do you see them on the agenda?
It's, uh, how about forty-one?
Forty-one, forty-one, I see. Jenny, you have something on this?
I didn't have it.
Oh, no.
One that says construction schedules, there's no security.
Well, security is always, yeah, okay. All right, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, sir.
Construction schedule was on, you know, rest.
Okay, anybody else in the audience that has an agenda item? Dan, you have?
Who? I think they're all still on.
Yep, okay. Dan, you have something on the agenda?
Oh, the holding contract, that's okay.
Uh, the which contract?
The success.
Oh, okay, gotcha, okay.
No, just keep rolling.
All right. Uh, four and five, approval of six nineteen two thousand twenty-three Board of Trustees meeting minutes. And approval of six twenty-seven two thousand twenty-three Board of Review meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve both by Irving.
Second.
Second by Cronin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? So Kerry, acknowledgement, uh, acknowledge reports, minutes from boards, committees, commissions.
Acknowledged nineteen fourteen.
Fourteen, okay, by, uh, Pitsenol. Second by Wyland. Anything on the discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Kerry, reports from departments. Administrator.
Couple things in my report, uh, we expected, uh, Delta New York Project two to be an open session, right? That full session, there's a desire to have a special meeting and talk about that, this, on that, uh, particular item. You want, there was some things that I asked about that I added my report that were requested to be, uh, separate agenda items, one being. Public safety building renovations and, uh. You have enough data on the status of the public administration associates, associates, uh. Compensation study, but, uh, we request from trustee Pitsenol that some other discussion about. Another, you need to change its scope.
I was.
Something that's, that's a separate, that, agenda item later, so.
The public safety, though, I added that on there in case you brought something up that needed to be approved. Or something that you had just in case when you moved it, kick it down instead of wait a month. So that's why I put it on, just to dovetail with your report.
Oh.
So you, you're very specific on all the different items up here. I just wanted to make sure that we could move it along, and that's why I had it added.
Okay.
And you were out that day.
So.
And I might be lying there pretty close.
That already. Uh, authorization of the world, they have with the installation of the.
It looks like it's moving pretty good.
Yeah, I'm expecting a vote on the, uh, clocking of the new ceremony.
But we'll have it done by July, yeah.
Pardon?
But we'll, we'll have it done by July.
Well, I don't know.
I thought that's what I said.
Today.
No.
I know that this company comes out a lot, it's a company that Army. Eighteen glasses worked with in the past, um. And only another work to the Wasser, my answer, but. Yes, we, just think they're gonna be able to do it. I don't know how much it's gonna take, um, but. Didn't have a sense, I would be in that with them last week to, uh. Do over with scope for the extent of the work was. Uh, so we, we're just only gonna get this scope this week. Did you get anything from me today? I didn't get anything, yeah, okay.
And that's, oh, oh, that was installation. I'm sorry, you were talking about. It says up, they'll be done by the end of July, okay.
I've got a question on the working.
Clocking, right, right, what?
I have a question, sorry, pardon. Um. Key card, Bob and Access, Jim, is yours working yet for the front door?
Uh, no one's worked for the front door.
So, you're aware of that?
So, no, then, uh, addressed that last week, see you the year one day.
Okay, my key does work though now. And it was just, it was just because of the newness, I had to kind of pull back a little bit. And I got to work and now it seems to, something must be, I must have did something with my key that did work faster, so.
And then punch list, is the, uh, is the lawn on punch list?
We're with Roman to, Roman and, uh, Travis and. We're combined, so we can get together with.
I just said a commodity to me from a landscaper in the area that our yard looked like trash, so.
It probably works, looks worse than that.
I think, I think, um, I know there's some law, you should bring down. You should look up, you should look up the group that did that lawn, um, around the curve on, going under the bridge.
Oh, yeah.
That is gorgeous. I, I see a water, a water truck there. Whoever those guys are, that's who you gotta talk to.
They were great.
That's who we gotta talk to.
Five days there.
Yeah, yeah, that's gotta be elite, lawn care or something, so.
Can you have the front door?
Nice job, my boy, yes.
Tell the boy, it's been my work.
Very nice.
I have a company that is called closers come up while we meet, after you inform me about that. So when, when was that? I didn't tell them. Special morning last Thursday?
Yeah.
Last Thursday. It would work.
Yeah. Lawyer.
Okay, that's a. But the button, the button is not. That, that's not working, but I'm saying you let go of the door and it didn't close.
Yeah.
Because it's, my understanding is stopping just before it left. Right, right, but if it's eleven thirty P M, it would be four minute. It, it should close all by itself, shouldn't have basically.
It should be just a tight, it should be.
On the one day. Let me take that down. I'm not beating you up, beating with the door. I just wanna make you aware of it. Some, we had it, a service company come up from Milwaukee to look at the door specifically. Okay, so if it's still not working.
Yeah, it just sits, it just sits right at the end and it just doesn't finish that last half inch.
Yeah, I believe you're on the third.
Okay.
Any conversation? Yeah, that was, yeah, we were good thirteen and it didn't, didn't operate correctly, so. Yeah, so that's, I, uh, it's important that I.
Or still an administrator, important.
Yep.
So, so that was to add to keeps punch list.
Okay. Building. That punch was something you could share with the board. This is, uh, development.
Anything, any more, Kerry?
Um, so, questions?
Yeah.
Do you have other items on the general?
Okay. Um, turn.
Um, nothing other than what's in my report, other than, um, we have Rachel Tasson started today. Um, she started new administrative assistant deputy for in the front office, and she started today, and we're. Doing a bunch of great things with her.
She seems really nice over her way this morning, keep night, it's a good job there. Uh, finance, Jessica.
Nothing yet.
Nothing yet. Uh, firing yes?
Our reporting package, we do have a position posted, uh, we had our E M S division chief, as you guys are, we resigned back in May. Um, we kind of sat on that a little bit to decide exactly what we wanted to do. We did post a part-time position, we. Redid the job description a little bit, we have that posted here for another week. Um, as of Friday, those resumes are going to, uh, the deputy chief, he was off today, but as of Friday, we did not have applications for that.
Okay.
Um, other than that, I have nothing bad, I have some good questions.
Okay. Uh, let's see, Park and Ryan? Go Park. Okay, that's right. And he's got something to mention in fact. And, uh, I enjoy the job.
So you have a report in the packets, um, I did have one question, uh. Getting, would you like to see a survey done about the chickens, or do you want us just to proceed with taking something for the practice?
Yes. You know, I don't have a lot of.
Yeah, so we're having this other, that a lot of, we could have something. Put together for that, we survey monkey, and you said out there, uh, maybe.
No, part and then about the monkey, right? Okay, so.
Um.
I just wanna make sure.
So.
Survey two, yeah.
The city of Marshfield did something similar and they're going through their programs now. Um, where they did a survey, so we have access to something similar. To be said on, otherwise we can just proceed, um. I guess in spots, but thankfully, we improved things out, like additional use from that, that would be something like, right? Say where the residents would be. Known by at least for that first one, getting initial permit, just depends on how much you want to.
I, I mean, I don't know if I was taking, uh, you know, a little sarcastic on the pigs. But I, I didn't, I don't think, think I got an answer back on that. I, I don't know what the next step is, you know, what, what goes from chickens to the next and.
Pet pigs.
What?
Pet pigs.
Pet pigs, goats, you know, I mean, I don't know, you know, so, and then, okay, so. Help me out, am I the only person here that doesn't understand the whole rooster aspect of this? So if I have a hen that lays, I don't need a rooster or I do need a rooster?
You do not.
Okay, now I can't eat those though. I can't eat those hens? Those are not to eat? Oh, I can eat them. Oh, once they stop, only then?
No, once they get cold.
When's it, when are they the best? When they're young? Oh, ah, okay.
You know, you know, when a whole feed of five year olds.
So would this be, so the ordinance would be, we're not gonna have chop locks and.
Yeah.
It's just, it's just.
Slaughtering at the end.
That's, so we'd use the word slaughter? Okay, all right.
That is how the ordinance is written, yes, they say.
And then, and I, you know, I didn't wanna be.
Unifying.
Well, we, I, we don't, we don't have enough people or, or, you know, to, to go after this, to, to police, to. To, I, I know, but a chicken, you, you name it, no matter what you talk about it. We, we don't have enough. We just don't have, we can't do the cats.
There is.
We can't do the cats. Cats are eighty bucks a piece.
There is one thing that I, that we.
Oh, two hundred.
In doing this, but I'm sure most of the people out there that have them, right now, are not registering them.
Oh, I know.
State, they have to register them with the state.
With the who's?
The state has a live block on history.
Oh. For chickens? I didn't know that.
Yeah.
I did not know that.
Because that, if there is an outbreak or some kind of alien type thing, they know exactly where to act. They don't share it with us. Mark Holm from the town, he's up E T Z, has been home corresponding, um, we'd have to do an inquiry, uh, information request.
So people out in the country think they can just have chickens?
Yeah.
Without talking to anyone? Okay.
So there's a registered, we're not, we're supposed to register, so a lot of communities will require that on the licenses.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been wanting, waiting to.
Well, and the fox and the fisher and all that, that is absolutely true.
Yes.
Because they are.
So I couldn't figure out what it was.
It was right alongside me and my husband said, wow.
So where are we on, uh, we're on chickens on planning and development, okay?
If you have any questions, I just wanted to.
What, what do we have, the September?
I got some.
November? No, no, September, uh, newsletter, you said, the wire?
Yeah, she's playing September newsletter.
No. That's called the Chicken Wire. Oh, I'm sorry, I, there's a time and place for everything, and I think this one we ought to rename Chicken Wire. Send it out, four pages, strictly chicken.
It was strictly chickens. There was a letter that came in to you that I, I, you and I saw before tonight's meeting. I know it's not addressed from anybody, but I think there were some good points in there that. I don't know if we can copy that out to the rest of that.
What is everybody fucking about?
The letter that we got.
Even though it's, even though it's not addressed from someone, there were some good points in there that I think would maybe provide some additional insight.
Is that the one that?
I, I, I thought Brian handled it so very well, very, very well, so. All right, so Park, anything else for? The wire?
No, I'll, I'll make.
Oh. Well, wait, just, just maybe, I, should that be planning's decision, not the board?
Well, you'll have to ultimately approve anything that's adopted, but I think that we're probably just gonna have.
Well, I, I have not gotten a for four yet, I've got all against. What?
Four?
I, I've got nothing, everybody that's been calling or emailing me is all against. Yeah.
It was like fifty percent.
Well, tonight, yes, but personally at home, or my email, or anything like that, so, yeah, what, I'm sorry?
Marsh, Marshall was like fifty fifty split.
Okay. And they went for it.
And then they have put something in place or about to. So I just wanted to know if you wanted a survey first or just wanted us to go ahead?
We can do that concurrently, you can draft stuff, go onto planning and then if you wanna. Make the chicken wire, what might be a show with the, and then you can use that as, as feedback to the.
Feedback, could, could. Does me have the whole? He just did it to Wausau, so. Wausau.
And get it out on social media? Why don't we? Well, that's what we're trying to do with the Western Water thing. Well, you can do it in your constant contact, isn't this right?
Yeah, we can do that.
Twelve hundred.
We can do it on next door and all that too, but we just brought for those that potentially go.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Let's move on to chicken police. I'm sorry. Yeah, that's right, the chicken guy's down there.
Uh, Liz, or who's higher, Austin, Linda, who came from the city of Portland, she's doing very well.
Oh, good. Okay.
We've been training for a while, we interviewed, um, that, last week, she did well. Tested well, so she's going to, want to bring her background back, we're working on that soon. And we have, uh, interview tomorrow with some experience, so, um, so we're, uh, for the higher class that are just challenged.
Um, you know, I don't know who reads the package, who doesn't, um, I get into it a little bit more sometimes than others. I spend a lot of time on your police reports, on the line after line after line, and after about a page and a half, I don't know where I live. I don't, I, I, I don't recognize the Village West, not, not from that police report, I don't. And, uh, it's, it's really, it's, boy, that's something else, it's really is, it's just, it's, just keeps coming, it just keeps coming.
That was a compliment.
That we don't see it?
That we don't see, right?
I know.
So there's.
I know, it's, it's amazing.
Calls for service and all of that, I'll make.
It, it's what, what, uh, what our public safety has to deal with, with some of the stuff, some of the, the talks we had over at Safer last week too. And what so many people go through, it's, it's just amazing.
Can I say one more thing?
Yeah.
So we had a, we had death in the village, uh, it was in a family, it was kind of sudden. Um, the officer that wanted to respond to, it was a natural death, the family would have set. The son, like, was like four years old, had a birthday coming up. The officer that responded, they're coming to the church. Um, also, so. I should sell, yeah, if, if, if in Facebook, you have, uh, letters wanting to find. So I should search. Those are the types of things that I don't know.
You know, it helps everyone, it, that touches a lot of people, and I'm sure that helps the officer. That, that, that I can do something, I can try to help, I, I remember this little guy, that has something else. Now, thank you for sharing. Uh, Michael, follow that up?
Yeah. Sorry, my, my dad's birthday was Wednesday. That's what, you're going to sudden, sudden, you know?
Yeah.
But, uh, anyway, uh. I, I got a recording packet, um, going on the agenda. Wasn't have news, uh, chugging along, we actually got a third crew out there right now, so two pipe crews and a grading crew, so they're, uh. Put, put a pretty dent in the things trying to get. I had a schedule, we should have the phase one paid by, um, for the middle to end of August, um. What their original, uh, contract schedule was. Well, seven and eight, the parking lot schedule get paid this Friday, the, um, the electrical ones, the main ones, but. That, uh, well, make the, make the wells pump water are looking to be delivered. At the end of July, so it should be installed by the end of August. Over those, uh, delivery dates, stay true. Uh, this morning, we did get a letter back from the D O T, or email from the D O T saying that they're still working on making some, uh. They're working internally to make some of the, uh, changes that we had discussed with them, so.
I took my, um, wife down there on one of the weekends and halfway through the wall, I went all the way, never got stopped, a recon over. And she said, where are we then? She couldn't live it. It's, if you haven't been out there on West Never, uh, start from Jane. And drive all the way to Ryan, you will not believe it, yep. So you gotta give her some.
You get stopped.
And well, no, you just kinda, you know, show your little pass card that we got from Nate now. Show that, they, they back off right away. I showed him that key card, it's, that's already just, whoa, 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 they went like this. No, but seriously, got a gun or a couple of times, but you'll make it. So, um, yeah, something else, uh, Nate?
I don't have that report.
Mm-hmm, okay, yeah, what is, what's the G I S portal, what, what's it importantly to go to staff for?
Yeah, so. The G I S portal is like an internal server, I guess that will be, like, will allow us to. The first thing we can do is be, be totally analyst, which allows like, crew to feel like, like shop the ball or even show. What copies are effective, no, I can't sound on the map. So that's kind of the first.
So, and, and identifying like all of the caps and all the, like, sometimes it's green, sometimes it's orange. Every time I see those colors, I always think, okay, you're, you guys are putting more stuff on, you know, like G I S and computers and stuff, yeah. More accuracy, more accuracy.
Right, so it allows more capability, um, for our G I S program.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I guess one of those things too, we're finding out, we have different applications right now, so for hydro flushing. So your crew has a hydro flushing map that they operate off of, and then we have a hydro maintenance map, and. Those two currently don't talk to each other, so if you're looking for, hey, when do we operate this hydrant, we gotta look through, like, through them, so.
No, it's all. Right. Good. So, um.
And the website we use, I.
I don't need one on Wednesday, um, and the new, uh, new hire, the major. Very stable, or, or, it's my setup site, so she can send one to you, um, so we'll have something. That's what we, that's what we.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
All right, uh, let's see, what product, uh, no, we have the. Say yes to all that? No, that was only for, yes? And again, now, twenty six, twenty seven, no help here, so. By Tronin and by Penisol, uh, anyone have a question hearing none, all those in favor, say hi. Opposed, so carry, what product transmittals, acknowledge June building permits. Uh, how about twenty six, twenty seven?
I just did that.
Yes, you did, of course. Okay, so, currently thirty, thirty one, um. And, you know, so, and assault and by.
Yep.
Second.
By Wyland, anyone in discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Opposed, so carry, so I just gotta back up a little bit here, so the reports, we don't have the knowledge. No, but the other one before that, I'm gonna get this, it's only been three years. All right, ordinances, seeing none, resolutions, seeing none, unfinished business, updating possible action on American Rescue Plan, ARPA funds, that's just kind of a. A bookmark, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
They go into what? No matter what they found out.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's. Pretty good, it's, uh. For the plan update.
Okay. You know, since we've had a couple of meetings, you know, with parks, different places, uh, uh, though, they're very, not many calls, maybe two or three, is, uh, Wausau has that park for, uh. Uh, all, for all kittens, and I, I've had a couple, that's like the, the one call that, that they're wondering if we're gonna do something like that here. That, that rubber, rubber matted kind of different things, I know Appleton has one too. Um, I.
Organizational study? Or that, that's something that we fund off, I don't know. It was less than. Five. What the board be interested is looking at, a block cameras, um. Something. These are a fun, usually issue of that, they're five grand camera, they're. There would be a route that the company needs to give up demonstration, essentially what they are, the cameras that are put up on, in the highway right away. And they're able to be query as far as, um. Windows sticker, something on a vehicle that, that maybe black rims or misses hubcap on color, and then they can actually get a license plate, and if you look through that. We'll be drawing the state, the city of Wausau just pretend it, they call me that some, and they solve for.
And they're called what cameras?
They're called five.
Okay, I just didn't wanna say the phone, so, okay.
If they run.
And they can move around? Oh, I know, but would you wanna put them on a different road, or it's always gonna be like on a highway that?
Yeah.
Wow, that's interesting.
So if. Be interested in a three. And demonstration.
Like right now?
No.
Okay.
What kind, what cost?
Five thousand a piece and they flock comes again. But they.
But it's per year, right?
Per year.
That's an ongoing.
How many?
Yeah, well, it would be, I mean, one helps, but no. I mean, lots of ten, three or two more.
And then it, it goes into a whole system.
Yeah, so you have access to, you know, throughout the country. That story.
So you look at an area like, okay, so Wausau's and, and maybe the counties, you look at another area that isn't getting it covered up here, so you put the coverage.
We're all.
Purchasing, but it's an ongoing.
It's in a, it's in a, I don't know if that would, would that be ARPA eligible, but if it's not, if it's creating an ongoing cost. Well, that's a sale.
Yeah. I think we should look at it. Yeah.
There is something to look at, yeah.
Okay.
Question?
Yeah.
How much you have in that?
A million four? Yes. About a million four left.
Shouldn't we make some kind of a plan?
Yeah, we, we, we just kind of, well, we have a lot of time. Yeah, well, I, that's the part I don't wanna, I, I wanna have something left so we can say, okay, we did something. And I, and I brought up and several others have brought up the parks.
Yes.
Do the parks and, you know, the parks need a lot of work, and instead of waiting to do, uh, a park every couple of years, we do the parks. And hit it, hit it hard, especially with all these surveys on the different stuff coming back, I mean, we could put a nice dent in, and the parks touch everybody in our unit.
But it would only make sense of that after we get the recreation study back.
Right, oh, yeah, right, right, so the timeframe of, probably for the ten time, Jessica, when do we have time to spend this? And it can't get called back, right?
Yeah, the time is six, but, yeah, they have it committed by the end of twenty four.
Okay, so we, we have to know, we have to have an earmark by the end of next year, and then twenty, no, I know, you're right, and then twenty six, it has to be spent. Yep, good point, that's why we put it on here.
We were kinda waiting for Sean to come back.
Yep. But, but, which is coming up, and it's the big. What?
They are.
Yeah. So I don't ask anymore, could we add to this thirty three or to that, it's a, you know, it's a bookmark? That, uh, they have to be earmarked by twenty four and spent by twenty six?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, then I won't have to keep asking, yeah. But I will, but I will, yeah, Park says I will anyway.
So one point.
What, how much?
One point four million.
Good.
Can you add a couple of those cameras until, and after that, it's gonna go on the budget, but still.
That's an excellent question.
Yeah, you're gonna bring that into here?
Okay.
With a whole bunch of cameras?
Um, he did a really great presentation.
That'll be fun. All right, let's move on.
Yeah, who selects the rotation for this?
Who selects? Yeah, I mean, we could do it collectively, but generally, uh, I've had some of their. Developers look at, you know, the map of the village, uh, what Chris is, well, you know, but, you know, I'm coming in, I can't fill up here.
Are they stationary?
They have mobile one for the. But the quality is phenomenal, successful.
But you, you, you know, I don't know, I, I, I read quite a bit, I read a lot of your stuff, and. And, uh, it's more and more across the country, across the interstate, there's points that things are red, and, uh, more and more hits are getting hit.
We're getting people to put alerts out down in Milwaukee, that's, and all those amber alerts are getting mostly solved.
Yeah, well, that's pretty cool. Okay. Uh, all right, thirty four, update on goals for twenty three, twenty five strategic plan. That's a bookmark also.
There was a request, everyone, of this, I know, I know there's a couple things on the agenda, asking whether we can be in there, yeah, but. Organizational study and, I do hire now, it's gonna be more address.
Uh, some of that, yeah.
More completely better our social media, some things like that, you know, moving towards some of these. What we referred to as a strategic action plan, um, Excel spreadsheet version of following some of these items, one plus or multi. There's multiple pieces that go into, it's not just those large, um. Scriptive items that it's current, so I don't know what we. Are able to necessarily, or should be, like, checking back, or we're gonna use this as setting roles for the staff. Here, uh. We will be practical in practice, so. It's your specific concerns, I guess, uh, it's kind of a high level.
Okay. Uh, thirty five, discussion and our action on special event temporary use permits. A ordinance twenty three dash X X X, an ordinance to amend section fifty point one oh three, relating to loud disturbing noises prohibit.
So my question would refer that to them last. If we're kind of past weeks, um, they did not want to impact these types of events and suggested if they're on a way to allow them to occur, since they don't do them often. Um, I made our recommendation, it actually should say Sunday through Thursday, when we're running to. Eight.
I caught that too.
Yeah. Friday and Saturday, so that could be a change that we may be leave it the same too, because it also sends a hefty report consecutive hours.
So what, what does that give, Sunday to Thursday, what?
So right now, the noise ordinance is between ten P M and six A M, and it's not.
Oh, restricted?
It's restricted, so you could change it to allow it, um, that only ten P M to six A M, so they, Thursday, and eleven P M.
To six.
Friday, Saturday.
Okay.
Um, to handle this type of events, um, in my opinion too, in reading it, it does say that it has to be in front of the. Most working consecutive hours, typically we would need to start looking at that. That's seven, twelve o'clock, so, I mean, they're not.
Yep.
So, I don't know if it's necessary, it's just up to you, I know that in looking at other things, it don't really help.
And this pertains to, uh, these special events, this does not.
These are just for non-residential.
Well, I'm specifically talking about contractors. So aren't they supposed to be done at eight o'clock at night?
Well, that's in a different spot.
It is, okay, all right.
This is for non-residential, adjacent to residential, so old cast of glass, you could have a. Glass breaking competition for eleven P M.
Okay, okay, well, they do. They do.
I don't want that to go.
So I don't know if it actually means to be changed.
Okay.
Their sports park has those events.
Yep. That's where it kind of stuck, yeah. Okay. So now, now the special event from Thursday to Sunday. Why, I wanna go from ten to eleven, that doesn't have to happen anymore. Cause now it's at discretion, or the opposite, right?
The ordinance doesn't allow it to change it.
Well, it's not, it's already. But I thought we're gonna go to eleven, just. The only thing this is doing is adding an hour for it. Yeah.
For the entire, the entire village, not just for.
Right.
Certain establishments, so.
Right.
They don't pass one to break glass, or, I don't think, I don't have.
No, what I brought up just times, yeah, okay. Right, so.
I would make a motion to take no action on changing the time of the noise order.
So then they would still have to ask for a special permission from ten to eleven? Right, for an exception? Every time.
So, yeah, Jim, how would that work?
Do they ask the officers, or do they ask who? Yeah, but I mean, it's, it's, it's nine thirty and nobody's there, you know, the band sucks, I don't want a special exception, okay, it's nine thirty, oh my god, the crowd's still here, holy crap. Now we want a special exception. Who do I call now? Oh, yeah, okay, so he's already asked for it.
He's got.
Got it, okay, got it.
Yeah, they had one seven months ago.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And it's designed to play until they got.
Okay.
Until the drummer, so Joe, can you play that, yes, we can.
Yeah, perfect. I like it.
It's on every, non-residential, every state.
So Tim has that motion.
Second on that motion?
Yep, second by Wyland. So we're, any more on the discussion?
Yeah, so.
Make sure you, we understand.
I just wanna make sure we understand that, so we're not gonna change it to eleven o'clock on Friday, Saturday. Correct. Now, I see village wide for all. But there is still an outlet for an applicant to do that, if they wish.
Will they accept it?
Absolutely, yeah, with that special year permit, that got, well, I've got another.
And then how does that exception happen, just by, uh? You just say, yep? If they ask, they say, yep, okay, all right.
Is there any language that would? Like a conditional use, uh, if you meet all the guidelines. States action states, you shall approve a conditional use permit, is there something like that, that would?
Well, there's performance language, and it's just the way that the, the standard. That's specific to use. Instead of. Instead of spoken, it's in terms of hours. Unless daylight hours unless. Even special.
What is a four hundred block?
We're getting a permit to use a four hundred block.
Who is?
They actually, whoever is using it takes purchases, we like someone using our.
I know, but the four hundred block, can they go until ten, eleven, twelve, what?
I see you still feel that with the office bar every once a year, so if you're.
Office bar, office bar, oh, I grant you.
I mean, originally, we gave it to them, it was once a year, it's not going to.
Four times.
I don't think it says not more than once per quarter, right? Not more than four times per year.
It's so many days, I think it's fourteen consecutive days per quarter.
So he's going to have it every night.
But if he wants to do two a summer?
Yeah. Those are four some.
I just want to make sure that what we're approving is not.
The, the intent is not to limit.
I, I understand that, I just know that the way the discussion went at planning. And that was where this, this originated from, so. The planning's recommendation was to change it to eleven. That's, that was my understanding.
Does that reduce the permits?
Just to make it easier.
Yeah, but.
He would still have to, he would still have to.
So.
How much is that permit?
But if they play inside, they can play through or her, or.
Inside, they can play outside, just outside, okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I'm trying to find.
To hear. You go stay till midnight?
No, no.
They're not. You sneak him in the pool, no? But, do you hear from over here?
They're the great big lighter.
No, it's not, it's just a look, states it, right? Uh, nope, no time.
It's a hundred dollars.
How much?
A hundred dollars.
Okay.
All right, so if he wants, so, so if he, if he goes to eleven, it'll be, he's going to go.
Any more in the discussion? Any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Wait.
Yeah, don't move the next one.
Oh.
So, I also want to make a motion to instruct staff to amend the special event permit to improve provisions to encourage staff. Make residents aware of the issuance of any such permit, potential impacts by posting electronic notice on the village website, social media, constant contact email platform.
Can we dovetail it into this? So. What? I, I just want to make sure we can.
Well, it is, it's, it's still.
The only thing on the agenda. I mean, there was discussion and/or action on special event, temporary use permits. So the A is specifically the ordinance, which was addressed. Um.
And then section fifty point one oh three, can, can that be dovetailed into what we're trying to do now? With notification.
You would make an amendment to, I had a draft ordinance out there, I didn't give it a number, because I didn't know if it would actually go through. So I didn't give it over, but there is an ordinance there.
So it's, it's in our.
Yeah, so you're saying that it would be part of the ordinance, or are you just having a direction of staff?
Direction of staff to change the ordinance. Or, or change the special event. Policies and procedures, especially that. Allow provision.
Do you want it done as a policy or an actual?
It's more a post.
Yeah.
Well, how can, as, as long as we can dovetail it, what this agenda says, would be the way you'd want it, I would think.
I feel like what we're addressing here, what the agenda item is, is for that ordinance to be amended. So if it's part of the ordinance, yes, it would be amended to the prior motion. To amend to include that along with that, um, the motion made prior. But if it's just us, like.
Yeah, so it's, it's in relationship to, yeah.
Then I think that maybe. Yeah.
Can we push it on staff first?
Something. The temporary use permit is part of that.
Staff also is not part of calling, so it's actually not requested that temporary use, so.
I would think that would be more. At the end, when we have staff referrals, maybe. Well, there was, it was a policy.
Ooh, there you go, staff referrals.
Yeah. So that, the actual, and bring it up the next meeting.
Yeah, staff referrals, yes, yeah.
The event one is actually a zone.
Yep.
It's a better, there's performance standards.
Okay.
Lower later.
Yep. Hey, this is what we do for Monday for five. Yeah, yeah, how much more power would you have? All right, next one. Uh, update possible action, public safety building renovations, I don't think we have anything there. Thirty seven, discussion and/or action on uniform contract. Who's, who's wearing a uniform now that we can see? Part of a contract. You know, that's just, uh. Yeah, anybody have any music here?
Short, sweet version.
Okay, all right.
These are our standard issue panels.
Okay. So what do we want to change on our uniform? What do we want to do on our uniform? That's hilarious.
So.
I think you ought to have some yellow stripes, so nobody hits you, you know.
Only one runs that.
Yeah, discussion and interaction, so what do we got?
So, we, I guess I've been without a signed contract, we talked about this at the March, so those board meeting. Um, so we had Dan primarily said, we're working with the, our reps from Cintas, and then we also reached out to Airmar, another. Competitor to Cintas.
Are they not giving us any contract pricing? Are they holding that over ahead?
No, no.
Yeah.
Jim can go in that with us, that year, when Cintas was here. You know, he brought up the air partner with what's called Omni Partners, it's a nationwide.
Oh, yeah.
And then, um, Stephen sent me Airmar's route, and I talked with him. So, it's my dog, we're going through these current.
Oh, it does.
And we looked at it. And what it's come down to is, Cintas was charging us ex a mo. We sign onto the Omni Partners, who they are the only member of that nationwide. Their pricing will drop down close to Airmar. Airmar, I talked to him on Friday, they sent us a contract, we went through that here, but I, I did with them, you looked at it. They will not guarantee a pricing. They come in, they give you a price.
Yeah.
They give you a price, but if you read through the contract language, it will state that they can raise it at any time.
And, and not just the contract, but they can do environmental administration, they can do all kinds of act of God clauses. I'm in the middle of one right now with waste management. And we, we actually got to a year where we could actually certify and say we're done. I, I've had three months of them, I, I just can't believe the attention that we're getting, and I'm down two hundred and fifty dollars a month right now. If we sign for one year. So, a, and then I also wrote in there that there's no additional fees, period. You can't put environmental, fuel, anything on there. Um, I would challenge it that we should be writing that into there, because they will sign that, because they want this signed. Because right now, there's a, there's a contract that's not signed, so they're, they're down one right now, somebody's, who's it, Cintas? Who's down one that had one here?
Cintas, Cintas is still serving us.
Yep, yep, but they're down a contract, so in their books, they're, they're less a contract, that's a big deal in their world. Because, uh, waste management is, I've never seen this kind of attention ever. It's, I mean, it's like dropping cable, and, and, you know, then all of a sudden you get all the attention for forty five minutes.
Because they all watch you, because I did this with my business, and I was in the same scenario where I had no signed contract, and I wasn't. An honorary contract, and. Like, I'm one of the radar for like three years, and they knocked on my door, said, hey, you need to sign us.
Hmm.
So I read all nineteen papers. And that's how I learned all this stuff that Dan about, and. That's now, I'm just write this line, and this line, and this line, and they won't do that if you're on this national pricing.
Oh, okay, well, then, then you're giving the pricing.
So, so that's kind of protection of, of this is. When there's twelve thousand people on this.
Other members, yeah.
Then they just do overall twelve thousand.
And take away, yeah, right.
And it would reduce us by three hundred and five thousand.
Uh, from this current contract?
We're working to what then.
Or the old one, so we're still up from the old one, probably.
Well, they all go. The national contract here will not exceed CPA. They can raise it, what, with Cintas, we would go with this, with the Omni Partners contract, that's the one nationwide. They cannot, they'll only raise it up to the CPI, that's it, and only once a year, and all the rest is a fluff that they want to throw in, the other ones want it to win. They come and give you a price, hit you low, and then they'll add all this stuff on, that is not it.
Yeah, then that, then you, you've exhausted it, you can't.
And I moved to a word, it's only two of the phone contracts, basically, based on the attached proposal.
By Ermeling?
Sure.
Uh, by Hardiger. Any more in the discussion?
Yes. Um, the uniform advantage and loss protection and M L prep charge and all that stuff, you guys lose a lot of, wreck a lot of stuff.
I'm sorry, what's that?
They. Like sixty five dollars a week for essentially lost and damaged insurance.
But that drops, I believe, under the element of.
Right, but, yeah, we should. We should look at it. If there's a return on investment for that, like.
Right.
For me and my business, I have to wreck more than nine garments in a year, and I wreck like two, so I don't pay that, yes, I pay the full price of twenty seven dollars for their pants when they get wrecked. But I don't pay them fifty seven dollars a week for them.
I mean, are you assigning somebody to the inventory? I don't know. I mean, like, does somebody check this guy in or down in? You know, when they bring stuff, I mean, do you actually check in the invoice when they bring stuff or no?
Renee emails me the invoice, I give it to the guys, we go through it, that's what we've been doing. We, we, when this all started, when we moved to the new building, that's kind of where we went, because there are missed. I don't get uniforms, and they're a mystery, we have never done this before.
Yeah.
So that's what I, but anyhow, to cut to the chase, that's what I've been doing, and we, we. I printed out, sit down with the guys on streets, parts have their own utilities, and say, go through this, make sure you have everything that we're going to go for. And some things that they were sitting on, winter jackets, they can return them.
Yeah. It's a big deal, it's way bigger than things.
Yeah, there's a lot to it.
It, it's, it's, it's a nuisance, but you, just to keep them, and if they know you're going to do it, they'll have it more in order when they bring it.
Yeah.
All right, so, uh, any more discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry, new business. Discussion and/or action on policy for identification badges, keys, and access cards.
We're going to approve.
By Corin? A second by Hardiger on the question.
Yes. All right, um. Wait, is this only question? Can we both have a hand with this one together? Perfect. Uh, is there a current and updated list of who has a key, badge, and box?
I have one.
It's updated, so every key that you put out, you know who has it.
Correct.
Do you know that I have one? Okay, you know that I have one?
Have all of those persons signed in the background?
No.
No. Because this is, we're just adopting the policy now, so.
I know, we're doing it backwards, we're making the policy after we already have.
Yeah.
Stuff out, but, so what's the plan for getting that?
Was it adopted, that was gonna, um, everybody said.
Hmm.
Yeah. Um, physical keys. What is the board's thought on physical keys? I think the, the access to a key should be very limited, that's the whole reason we pay the pile of money for these.
Yes.
Joints, you know who comes in, when they come in, where they come in. Our backup power, what is that power? Will that run the doors?
Yeah.
So there, there's, I mean, other than standard power and backup power failing, and some crazy act of whatever.
You have to run out of these sort of.
Right, so, other than that, there's almost no need for a physical key at this point, right?
Physical keys should be collected, because they don't, they don't address when you come or, well, not leave, but come.
I'm trying to complete this of, of physical. Our keys. We discussed, you know, what to, like, when the key box get out. Or key card.
But they've been over two months.
Yeah, but, yeah, but things aren't working completely yet, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you could still enter the building here.
No.
Yeah, right, so, what, what doors don't work? Because everything worked but that door, but the front door sadly.
And the south gate.
The south gate.
Well, he says that they have not worked till. Yeah, that's easy, it's gonna be the ones that fix, right?
So we have odd gate that works, and we have all doors, but one that work. Okay, so there's no need for a physical key then, correct?
Yeah, so like the boardroom doors are locked every day. Those don't have, uh, for off key box.
Was that a key bright idea or what?
It was this, yeah.
But you can still enter the boardroom through here, correct? Right, through this back door?
Yeah.
So just like I can't get in the front door of the building, which is really embarrassing, so I would have to come inside door of the building, I could still enter the boardroom, I could still enter the rest of the building, correct? You can't come through the front door to main boardroom door.
Right. Well, but it's the two of you that are making the decision on when you want to have keys back, correct?
Right.
Correct. Yeah. So. To them, I guess, whenever, whenever they think it's demons. Time to take it back, they can ask for it.
That's what I'm going with.
Yes, what am I saying?
Yeah, we're done with the key.
Um, and then. Tell me where you got the rock hidden, where the hidden one outside, where did it go?
Uh, what about, so, with keys back, you have a plan for that? Next somebody.
Yeah, once we were fully operational.
Okay.
Okay. Um, what about contractors? So you mentioned there's contracts, you got whoever, the acting point camera or whoever. Those guys sign off on the same thing, and they, you collect their badge when they're gone, unless it's a long-term relationship.
Right, that was in the policy, we're making a special ideas of where, the line.
Okay. And they're going to sign the same contract, because it says in here that you can, you can fire them? Or.
You might, you might get a different one through the.
Okay, I, I didn't see it in the packet.
Right.
You have a different one for elected officials, or you fire us to?
Can. But we do need lenders.
So can we work on a language for that? I, I think the one that's drafted for staff was very good, but it's not all inclusive for all of our. What?
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry, thirty nine, discussion and/or action on conducting an organizational study.
Well, this comes at the request of, uh, Chris Kinsel, um. This, the question is, we want to, this is called, man, contract with. T A A. Uh, to. I guess I call it organizational study, it could be referred to as, uh. It's termed something else, actually, through, uh. What it was, I want to tell that, um. But I guess just, I think the intent would be to understand that we have the proper staffing to deliver services that we. Are, uh. Required to provide, things that would, I think, some of the topics come up, or our challenges, and, um. With our size of organization, if there's, if we are staff, especially, I think, with the top few mountains. It's a, uh. That's points of that, especially with the water utility, sewer utility, so. That would be. To, you know, look at what our staff level is now, would be where, I don't know, more. Period of staffing will be for some size of organization than with that.
My, my hope would be that it doesn't just look at. Whether or not we have enough staff, that it's looking at whether or not the staff that we currently have are functioning in. In the best way.
Correct, yeah, it needs to be an overall, I, I think, not just a task really, but like a time study as well, okay, so are we spending seventeen hours? Painting manual covers or whatever it is, right? And do we have enough people to spend seventeen hours painting manual covers? Um.[1784.98] We want to provide a high level customer service to our residents. And if we don't have the right staff and right positions in place, Michael had an excellent example with, with. The water use, right? So you ran a four. Four staff members for a cover lawn and piles of water and sewer utility have doubled with the same four bats. Right? So the same thing is happening everywhere else, right? I mean, we didn't count the number of. Whatever.
Yeah.
Maybe double, thirty acknowledge or the number of. Building permits or whichever, but we can increase that number. A majority of the goal is that how is projected that happen in the next number of years? In a less than a year, so those. Really built a building that can facilitate their growth, but we need to look at the staffing. Not just the number of people here, but the jobs they do, and we have the right people doing the right jobs.
So, should we, I think. Proposal, uh, I mean, we had the estimate for paper touring that, uh, one year ago. Were including. Easy plan and compensation set, you know, three components. So maybe it was, it was an estimate of over twenty thousand dollars for each corner of the day. So we did get proposals for this piece.
So I'd like to make a motion to direct the administrator down to bring a board of proposals to perform an organizational study. To the board of the August twenty-three regular board of R C M E. This proposal should include a time studies and distribution of responsibility study. As it currently stands, and the recommendations of in proposed changes involves responsibilities, addition or subtraction of staff members.
Second. Motion by Vinicius Hall, second by Corin. Any more in the discussion?
I've got something. The current study that's being conducted right now, the high level, the people that didn't marry up. With the competition that we had.
Compensation for what they're paid, it's the only.
Doings on it also.
Yeah, money based life is part of it.
It's not just paid for those groups.
Oh, so when is that gonna come back?
That report is in your calendar, but it's due at the, uh, for the indication of the. November, uh, I believe it's September. So we can have congruent study, very painful one. That's gonna come back and give us the roles and responsibilities, prepare it to other positions, like sized communities, and this out. Better reflect what those people are doing here and what they should be doing here. And what they're doing elsewhere. So would it, would it be? A good idea to run out, try to get. Proposals from other people while we have one that's already. I'm, I'm just afraid that we're gonna be. In conflict with each other, we're expanding why we don't need to spend it till we know what to spend it on.
I think this is just an ask, well, I know this, so just an ask for, for both current estimate for that.
Come back.
Not, not to have to serve it, but to bring it back for August, so in August, when you talk one day across X number of hours to. Have a study that checks out this done. And then in September, when we get the results from. P A A of what they've already done, we should have a complete report by September meeting, yes?
Uh, that's the indication from the report, but it's from.
So we'd be able to make the decision based on the whole numbers. Of, of, if we manage to handle the scope of a deep and high level director, since we did that, we don't have to look at.
Or, uh, how much would that say? Which one?
The ones that come out.
It was literally twelve.
Okay.
An organizational study is going to cost close to thirty.
Yeah.
It's gonna take about six months to do. And I guess my. Valid contribution in this, probably understand, or people are actually lining up for you.
Don't do that.
Yeah, I just don't want to spend all my, I use that one.
Well, this.
It takes six months.
At this phase, although we won't be spending money, we're just getting.
Correct, this is just, just asking the administrator to get proposals, to get an actual proposal or.
Or the whole of the basis, yeah, I can help with that.
For us to put that proposal together, have that study. Based off what their most responsibilities and what jobs. And I would think that Keith would go to P A A as one of those people and say, hey, you've already done X, Y, Z. So who wanna broaden this scope to include this other stuff? What does that look like?
Okay.
I agree though.
For work, the scope, complete the scope, and you know what you want for likewise, if that, that, the spend. Do you understand that? Yes.
Do we have motion and a second on the floor? Any more in the discussion? All those embarrassed, say aye.
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 Opposed? So carry. Alright, forty, discussion and/or action on renewal of manufactured home park license for Stillwater Landing. Manufactured park four, forty-three eleven, school to that.
You can't work a license, you have to give it to them.
Right.
Uh, to go through the process, uh, that we understand we have to go to, uh, you know, to start. With warnings and different, the different things we have to have them on with the license, is what I understand.
How long the last year? We don't even could that. Just, we need that license, we needed to go through the process of qualifying that. Of the situation with that park. So the license was renewed. But now we put in, now the recommendation, the thing we need to do is get in the process. By, um. Or it's notifying the park owner of violations of zoning code, mission of the park and. And the, uh. Contents, the. A property within the park. Uh, so I think that is what. I think the domain has worked on the detail of the first, a copy of the. Uh, building inspectors. Report as part of the, uh, packet today, uh, who's the work to it? Um. So I think we just have to, uh, acknowledge or.
So we, we reissued it, we reissued it already, or we actually never took it away? With our board action of not giving it to them. That never actually worked, it's null and void.
Didn't do that without, you know, this, it's super, it's light, see that?
But we did take action. But we did take action. And then without action, we put it, gave it back. Are we, I mean, could they not still sue us because we took action?
That's the issue.
So the member ordinance freeze, if they apply for it. And pay for it. You have to issue it.
So why are we approving it?
I'm asking for a little more teeth by requesting that they do the action plan, but I request.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I'm just saying the whole process of just going through this exercise, which. Apparently doesn't make sense because we're approving the license, which we can't deny. Unless we have all the teeth ahead of the night. Why I'm saying is, if they apply and they pay. They, they shouldn't even be out here. We shouldn't be approving it because it's. I, trust me, the owners of the parks, they know. They know what's going on. Because if, if I was in a business, I would know that we can't approve them or take them away unless we given them a whole bunch of warrants. So this, this is kind of weird. I mean, so from now on. If they pay and, and we haven't done nothing, done, doesn't have to come here. Right? I, I'm just saying, why do all the steps? Yeah, but we, we issue, but can it just issue at the critical? Yeah. Doesn't have to come to this level. Yeah, so, so anyway, enough of that. Yeah, enough of that.
So we don't have to change the way the license is issued, and I don't know this for a fact, I'm trying to dig back into this, okay, okay. If you want to change the way a license is issued, you have to change. I think you can change the ordinance and have more strict entitlement.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, that for us to do something now to actually deny or try to pull one. We have to have all these things in place. We have complaints, we have this, that, that. Right.
The rest.
Okay. So where are we at with that?
You, you've known about this since when? But, uh, how long have we had open to reliance or a job?
Yeah, but now wait a minute now, we've, we've kind of, we've kind of had hands off here for a bit because he's been telling us he's gonna do all this stuff. And so now we're gonna go through the procedures because we've got tons of history with this part.
Absolutely.
Okay.
No, I'm playing with the same wild because frankly, the policy was, we were playing nice with that.
Sure, yep, because he was promising and promising and promising and not delivering, yeah.
Am I supposed to, um, contrary to what? I, I was just simply asking you, you know, it was a problem for, I don't know.
Oh, it's so much trouble to me, it's twenty years, I think.
Yeah, yeah. So.
So it's, I mean. We've done a lot of. Documentation. We were told to be hands off. We were hands off for the last year. Travis spends a lot of time out there. There's four hundred pages worth of inspection reports in there. We had that up for. We provided it. They emailed it to Mr. Schultz. He has not opened it yet, read receipts. They tried to take a binder there, there's nobody there, so we'll be just sending it in the mail. Laura was gonna go with a, um. Certified mail and. I would like an action plan by October second, if, if he does not provide that, if it's not to satisfaction. Then Roman has my problem, they show me. The complaint. Only three people, and there's my comment, and I have that complaint.
What's stopping us from issuing the complaint now?
Yes, that's my question. If, so it has to go, when we issue it, when I, when I file a complaint with the clerk, then there's the ten day window, and we need to have that hearing. Okay, if we haven't informed them of, officially informed them of the deficiencies, I E, issued them citations. Their lawyer will, will tear us apart.
Okay.
Like they have that. So, so direction from the board has to be two staff. Please issue all three hundred and seventy-seven citations tomorrow, right? Well, I, I, I guess what I. What I put in the, in the report.
Yeah.
Which is, that's right, he has a thirty, sixty, and ninety day compliance on specific issues.
Yeah.
I run all three hundred and seventy days, I promise that they were wrong the first time and we got. Right, 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 so, so once he, if he doesn't have the first thirty days. Then he gets the citations, so you can't. Issue the complaint now. You have to wait thirty days to act in Kelvin before you can issue the complaint. You can't issue the complaint until you have thirty days to fix this. The complaint's going to her, which is separate from the citation process. Okay, so you can file a formal complaint tomorrow with her. I. I can't. That is something that I am able to do per, however. That's not what I'm recommending on previous experience in this situation, because we haven't issued them any citations.
So citations first.
We've been through this with other cars and not issuing them citations.
The complaint kicks off basically through closing their license and closing the project.
I gotcha.
That, that's what the complaint is, and that follows the statutes that the state puts in place.
So why, why can't we issue the citation? I'm sorry, yeah, Bart first, go ahead, Bart.
Well, I guess I want to put in a little bit of defense for staff.
But yeah, you were here for that.
Yes, we went through this once before. And we didn't have all our ducks in the row and we got.
And that's what you're saying on the citation, so we gotta get that first.
The other thing is, you're talking, saying, why, if staff knew all this, why weren't they doing something? They started to and they were told to stop.
Think we had a nice meeting with everybody and then we're gonna.
Right, they told them.
They promised us the world, yeah, yeah.
Right, that they, and, and I think. You got somewhat. Hand slapped because you were in the.
You can say it's me, you can say it's me. I, I'm fine with that. I, 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 I got hoodwinked, I, I trusted them, I thought they were gonna fix this. Uh, we had meetings with two or three of them, then we had a lunch meeting with them, and I completely got hoodwinked, completely. And so now we're in a homeowner gear. And now like the gym, or gym and, and, and all of us are saying that Steve, now we gotta move in here. Every single day, we gotta get something happening here to get back up to speed. Because shame on me, number one, but we should be at the third or fourth process already, not at square one, because right now we're at square one. Yep.
Right, well, that's all I want, like, Jim, he's kind of saying to stop.
Point right to me.
Why haven't you done anything? They tried and then they were said, let's give them a chance, so it's.
I understand, I respect.
They assume we go through this process. And they don't do what we want them to do, and we issue to shut the park, shut down the park. What's gonna be happening to the people there?
I know that.
How much time they have, Steve, how much time they have to move out? And find a place, and I know some of them are gonna have difficulty finding a place.
Who do I?
I think we should think about this issue before, you know, just.
We want, we want compliance, we want.
I don't want, I don't want, no, I, I don't want to make still a lot of name ready, like.
Yeah.
Yes, it's like, Lois Gruber has, in the audience here, she's been through this, but she read the two eighty-one grand.
Hmm.
Okay, so. So the intent is not to shut the park.
Right.
It is trying to gain compliance.
Hmm.
We're on the exact certification.
Okay.
In fact, there's no guarantee they're gonna do it.
There isn't, there isn't.
But, but we have to have all the things.
We have to be ready for a. Most difficult part of this project.
Yeah.
Right.
That's what I'm saying, we have to have a planning, we have to have everything aligned, the step by step. And let them know, so people sitting in that park, living in that park, they know what's coming at them.
Well, there's gonna be some of them that are gonna get citations of violations. I mean, Roger's table lot was gone through. So he also has to notify each lot owner, because we can't guarantee that the park is going to qualify on. Because they, there's, we, we don't have a role, but he's never been asked the role.
Well, he, he's gone, he's gone past that and he's evicting. He's, anybody that speaks up, he's evicting.
Yes.
You know, so they've got basically till tomorrow. I, I don't think there's any teeth, but talking to Chief Schultz.
I filed a complaint and I got an eviction notice two days after.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. So talking to Chief Schultz, uh, the eviction doesn't happen with us, it, it happened with Mar-a-Lago County. We'll see if that actually happens, if they actually come and serve it. I can't imagine that we'd have to go through this, these many steps. To do something to a, an area of homes, yet he can evict in five days? That's below now. I mean, people squat for a happy year for God's sake, you know?
We might move out of there for, since I tend that, since then, we've been moving out of there, they're, they're tired of the fight.
Yep, yep, it's exhausting.
The money for.
Yep, it's exhausting, yep, Hussein?
He's gonna use the people and bring them back here, love this room with those people, they say, where are we gonna go? So that's what happened last.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know.
This lady has, I, I hope she did.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, we, like Roman said, only one, we just moved in there, because we lived on Grand Avenue. And he was awful.
Hmm.
So we get here to come here, and we landscaped our yarding and this thing. Took out a lot of stuff in the back, big bricks.
Hmm.
And we, you know, those, um. That we put up underneath the trailers.
Yep.
My kids, my whole backyard, I hired it neatly in the back slot for them to pick up. But finally, they did come and pick it up after several months.
Hmm.
But my kids did all the labor and cleaned everything out back there. So it's keeping our yard up.
Yeah.
And then he comes and he moved the next lot, uh, lot over, so it don't look so crappy in my house either. And we even had to fill up in the front, because what they filled in, our trailer was starting to sink, so the kids even filled, even filled all that up.
Yeah, so our, our, our intention is compliance, yeah.
So, so, okay, so back to, how do we report? So here.
Go to two twenty-three, I have the stuff.
Two twenty-three?
Roman starts with the relationship to send.
Quite a bit.
It basically starts with the complaint, and then there becomes their, their best to be adhering, or appearing.
Two twenty-three, you said?
Yeah.
Alright, got it.
The complaints can't. So if we can.
So the complaint should list all the reasons why the license should be revoked, just as we could reach a report. We wanted to do that.
So it's a licenses with both, what actually is?
When you, like, actually.
So you can't, you can't file the citations that we gave him.
Are, are we going to have infrastructure or anything, owners not the?
We want compliance, yeah, we want compliance.
So do we just cite, can we just, what are our citations toward infrastructure and ownership and not the license? Is that possible? I don't know what.
He's gonna, he'll turn it around and put it on that.
He got a lot of, a lot of residents that don't care anything about being compliant to you or anybody else. They've got cars, trucks, machines sitting in the yard.
Yeah.
They have residents, and then, and, 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 and drive on their stairs, I mean. You know, and when you, when you tell them that they're not supposed to do it, they laugh.
Well.
And so we're also going to need the help of the F D D the last time.
Again, the people that they're doing, the people who are helping, people saying, complain, we don't have a problem, it's our home.
I'm sorry. I couldn't hear what you said.
So the last time that we did this, Scott changed our road with the officer and they just went through. I think he wants to.
Right, period.
But it's mostly Scott's and they went through it.
We're gonna have to leave no Scott again if he's got some experience with this. So you and Scott.
Scott's been through it twice.
Yeah.
Third twice, yeah, that through once. So it's it is it is a drawn out lengthy process. I mean, 281 Grand Avenue still has homes in swan. So so if we approve this, if we approve this with a plan with an action plan to remedy the issues by October 2nd and they don't provide that plan, where are we at there? Well, where I I guess that's what I.
We're we're both pushing.
So at what point do the citations come into play?
30, 60, 90.
From from when? From October 2nd?
No, when I.
When you asked.
Yep.
Last week. Yes. It was emailed out last week. Like you said, we attempted to hand deliver it on Thursday. And then no one was there. Not enough.
Doesn't have to go to that site? Or can someone drive it down the? I'll drive it down the floor.
We'll just.
I would have no problem with that.
Certified letters.
Certified letters.
To go over.
What?
Certified letters the best.
Okay.
Yeah. So you gotta wait until 90 or come inside them after 30? That's a third. There's there's either gender that actually taken care of within the next 30 days.
Okay, so and some of them. I gotcha.
All right. Then they'll recite basis. And that's the way the letter states.
And that's the way it was when I was there. I remember Roman walking in and saying, okay, you know, it'll work with you, but here's the stack.
And it's not handled. All the questions.
So certified letter and then wait, how long does it take before you realize that they received? You know, they 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 attempt three times, don't they?
Yeah. Typically, it's every time. I have to look back at the last one, but it's two, it's several minutes.
It's quite a game. You know they're coming and you don't wanna accept it.
No, the the listed hours at the office are another issue. I mean, that's the thing. There's a, there is a a lot of issues, okay?
But I mean, well, I guess my, I'm sorry. But no, I I point my fees. I I've tried to sort my little letter out before and then they just need it for the post ops three or four weeks before they pick up. No, it didn't. And they just don't get. I mean, is do we have the option to have share or?
Maybe process.
One of those.
Do you guys deliver?
I wouldn't.
Well, I mean, we have in vast cases delivered hand. We and Scott have physically tracked stable down in Schofield to hand deliver.
And I think honestly, if I take Chief Schultz or regulars, they want his officers.
Yeah, but we're going to their corporate, their corporate, Alvo.
Oh, you're over.
Yeah, Alvo, right. It's.
It's not here.
Yeah, he's in Alvo. Yeah. I'm ready. I go anytime you want.
I thought you.
We're seeing this point, seeing the five miles apart. Yeah, okay. Whatever you want. Do we even wanna bother with certified mailers? Should we just?
I think officer.
I'd have an officer.
I'd say you and Scott and I.
My number nine, I have an officer.
So Scott's gonna hammer that. Scott can bring a pack of old. All right. All right, are we?
All right, I'll I'll make mine.
All right.
I move to approve license with the requirement that they provide the village with a written action plan to remedy the issues brought forth.
We don't have to approve. Turn it in.
It's already. Well, that's what the recommendation is.
You actually, I mean.
The board still has to approve.
Maybe they should because you didn't approve it last time. Yeah.
Yeah.
I had.
We don't have to approve.
He personally was looking at it and wondering why it got approved.
Why staff running against that?
Yeah.
They were checking for your historical purposes. Find it now.
All right, okay, so let me take mine, because I have something I wanna have to approve license with the requirement that they provide the village with the written action plan to remedy the issues brought forth in July of 2023. I'd also request that this is on our agenda once they go forward with updates.
Second, uh, motion by Cronin. Second by Pinusol. Any more in discussion? All will say I, say I. I oppose. No. Okay. It's just a shot across the ball. That's all.
Giving them all these things that they're supposed to be get done since they took over.
Yep.
And in this meeting right now, it's my understanding that even though they haven't done a darn thing, you're gonna give them a letter saying that they have to give you a letter saying that they will be patching on themselves.
Yeah, it's turning us deep. It's the only teeth we have right now. That's I know it's baloney. It's baloney, but it's true.
This is like one after.
Yep. Yep.
Don't you go to the first page of the.
What first page?
First, they go to the first page of the. You open the one that I left first.
What are we talking about?
They they allow an estimation of what's.
Oh.
What is gonna happen. That, yeah, so the first page results in spring 23, maybe that's more part of the section.
Yeah. Really? Oh, yeah, a bunch of crap.
Just just.
Am I? Am I orders like that? I'm gonna go to school. So what are we trying to do here? Paul, here?
So that's that's the list. Okay, there's a page titled, go I 13.
Oh, yeah. Oh, it's on me. It's on me. I got sucked in by a little.
Results of spring 23 now. I did. I know. There is thirty things.
Oh, yeah. I'm right here, guys. Can we?
Renewable for competitive abandoned houses has to be done in the next 30 days. There's six of those. Sealing face serializes are probably not probably still on five lots. Okay, that's the first avenue. Those are safety issues. That's not a park that helps safety issue. That's the first one. All right, okay. Then we're moving on to demolition degrees, making lots, cleaning up the debris, all of the the bill that's in the park. Okay. And then there's the third tier, which is a length more lengthy with code violations with with light fixtures and stair steps and that sort of stuff.
How come these weren't made before? How come these complaints weren't made before?
Yeah, you you know, you know, I I gotta, I just gotta share something here. I I apologize about my tone, but it's getting to be 8:30. And I you have to trust us that we're in, we're going in the right direction now. I will, I will take, I will take fault that I stole this.
I understand.
That I stole this. But yep, yep. And and we're gonna, we're gonna beat this thing to death right now. But trust us that we are going in the right direction. Everybody is on the same page here and we're gonna go at this. Trust us. Right, and we're. What's that?
Tell us what we, the people that wanna be here, people are taking care of their bodies. Tell us what can we do to help make sure that you guys get all the funding? How can we give any help? Because we have to watch these homeless people travel through our yard. If we forget to lock the shed well, then they're moving in there. Uh, we hope they have trash all over the place.
I think number one, you gotta call, you gotta call the P. Everest might have to call anytime something like that's happening.
Say say in ears and and helping us like Susie did. I mean, she.
Like that and they tell me, you can't call us, call the park. You gotta talk to the park manager first.
Yeah, well, that's probably not gonna help the park. But I mean, uh, you know, you gotta let us know or or get some notes together or text. You know, Roman, you know, and then he'll have to decipher it at a certain point. I mean, if you want, don't expect stuff back right away, because he's already going in a direction right now. But um.
The the complaint form on the website is if there are specific issues that you feel I haven't addressed, we need to mention your words or situation or conditions change, then putting in the on the website, we have to report it. That's that's your number one step. It's it's obviously some sort of. Safety issues.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point. Roman?
You need time.
Roman, you know, we should print that off. And they could get a copy of that.
So does it have?
Oh, it is. That's right. It's all in our. It's all there. Yeah. It's all in the package. Yeah.
Yeah, it's a package.
Yeah.
So then Mr. Schultz, 30 days to remove the garden hose from one trailer to another. That's a safety issue. That's that's not sanitary in any way, shape, or form.
It's a temporary hookup that was probably put in what sometime last year. So. Last year and it still isn't. He was told, he says there's no money to fix that. That's his, that's his, what he says, yes. Yes, but. And so it's. It's on us now. I love her, Jeff. Okay. I understand. But it's just frustrating and so I.
Oh, it's frustrating all around. Yes, for sure. I think the best thing you can do is continue to submit complaints, because the more documentation that we have, the better.
You know, just don't do it every day.
Really, we shouldn't be concerned about that.
What?
We shouldn't be concerned about the money we're gonna have.
Right. No.
Our concern is fix it.
Yep, yep.
I believe personally, I don't care what he brings up.
Yep.
We wanna see fixed and people that they help places. Now, he doesn't have money. That's not a problem. We don't wanna hear it. Right.
You know, we all.
That's the excuse. We, what is, there's no money.
Well, yeah, that's what we get. We we we've been promised, oh my God, before I left there last year. I left, when they guys were took over the park, the first thing they were gonna do was fix those roads. They've raised the rent there at least five times since I've been there. And I got the roads are a bit a lot worse. That's the only way to fix them. And they never have money for anything. They can't afford to fix anything. We got streets like that personally responsible for it. They don't even think that they're gonna fix. They don't have money for that. But they got money to go to the gym, go to vacation and and show and and party with all their rich friends.
Okay.
Anyway, we don't let that you guys go.
No, no, that's right. Um, but it is, it is a private park, so we can't like go in there and do like a big item pickup, right? Like we do for a whole village, no? Okay. Okay.
Did we vote?
Uh, did we vote? I thought we did. Yeah, I said no. Yeah. Yeah. All right, let's moving on here to 41. Hey, bonus time. 41 is done.
Forty-two.
I was just trying to tell you. Forty-two, a discussion and or action on Sultana Avenue and Master Street intersection, engineering proposals. Uh, is this, we're talking around about, right?
Wait, wait, wait. No.
Oh. Oh, it's.
I like round about, you're right.
Yeah.
It should be around.
I think so. All right, I know Steve likes. All right, motion, motion by Zagami, second by. Who's second? By Ermling? Any more in discussion?
I got a question. Uh, this is going to MSA, correct?
Yeah.
Yes. Is there? I see that Clark Beets came in lower. Is there a certain percentage that we're not?
Thank you all. Thank you all. Yep.
Are we good?
Yeah, we just. We're. Know it's.
A higher race. Okay. Got it.
Uh, Harry, no more.
We gotta balance between most.
Yep. Harry, no more discussion. Yes, I do.
Oh, is it, is there another permit that can do this? Cause that doesn't seem like a local firm anyways. Dude, I mean, are we talking from Minneapolis or does it really matter that it's MSA? Or they physically go on site, but. Yeah, it does. They'll be on site, um, you know, especially with the instruction of it. They'll be there, you know, inspecting and each of the, I mean, correctly. So it has to be a local-ish person to see in here? I I guess it doesn't have to be local.
Uh, excuse me. I don't want somebody from Minneapolis come and do the simple project for us. And they're not gonna be any cheaper. Because you got to throw out two, 300 miles to come here to the project. And here we got a 300, 400 year.
That was my question, Wu Sheng. You're not located in Weston. It's not.
It doesn't matter. I mean, as long as.
So so.
As long as it's in the state of Wisconsin, I'll go for it. If you want to come from Minneapolis, I'm not for it, no.
Okay. Any more? Are we still looking at this fall or is next spring?
Um, it'd probably be next spring.
Um, it'd probably be next spring. If if what I hear, I mean, and MSA has a proposal, um, just ordering the control cabinets. It's like a nine-month window, so they're prepared to get the bare metal design as soon as possible, so that you can procure that you want it. Excellent.
Harry, no more discussion. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, forty-three. Discussion and or action on Weston Avenue and Alderson Street roundabout color. Uh, absolutely not. Because until my roundabout gets color, nobody gets colors. All right, so that's the end of that crap right there. So that's done over on, you know, we're going to forty-four. Forty-four. Are we gonna make a motion? Oh, yeah. Let's do it.
I move. I move to recommend not color the concrete.
Is this our project or half with Rossell?
Well, Rossell's three quarters of Rockchild and a quarter.
No, they wanna go. Are they gonna go three-quarter color?
Well, Rossell, when they, when Rossell's up prices, they said it.
No, no, go ahead. Okay, you guys want to.
Okay.
Motion on the board.
Thank you all. Uh, so we have a motion by Corrin and a second by Jasper Hardinger. Harry, no more discussion. What?
Discussion.
Oh, discussion. Go ahead.
Um, school's MSA numbers were. Big news, hundred percent. It's not a thousand dollars a yard for green concrete. I spent thirty minutes on Friday on the phone telling Tom to increase sand gravel and house. And it's funny because. Michael filed this up and confirmed these numbers, so.
How much is it?
Expect for red.
Yes.
Red is a hundred dollars a yard for the DOT red. Um, the, who with a thousand dollars a yard came from that MSA guy? So a thousand dollars a yard is MSA contacted county materials. County materials did a special project for John Beer's corporate office. But that color of the concrete had to match their tractor exactly. That's why it was a thousand dollars a yard.
As it should. Yeah, it's a John Beer color. John Beer green.
Right, so the cost of of red is eighty to a hundred dollars a yard.
Mm-hmm.
The cost of green is about a hundred and forty dollars. So it's sixty dollars a yard and then approximately fifty yards would be a three thousand dollar addition. The Philly was responsible for twenty-five percent. On a two million dollar project.
Yeah, I I've asked on on color and they tell me their colors unbelievable. Blue is the worst, but you gotta clean that whole rainbow.
It costs thirty bucks to do that.
Yeah. Wow. I've never heard prices that low.
Cause cause I got actual numbers on this. I thought, how is a thousand dollars per yard? How is, why would anyone do this? You see other municipalities? We have red concrete in our village.
Well, there's red concrete down by, uh, uh, Whitburn. Yeah, we've got red on, uh, uh, name Phillips and Ross. Yeah.
I I guess my my personal recommendation is.
Is no color.
Well, we can expect it and it'd be an actual price instead of an estimate from county officials or anybody else. It's a simple line on this this project. We can know, okay, gray is X, green is Y, red is.
Okay. Which?
Well, I don't think we should do that because Village of Rossell already said, we're not gonna be done for a hundred percent is cost of.
So we'd be paying the whole thing.
That's true. And the other thing is, when they give you a hundred dollars per cubic yard, it just costs of the concrete.
Right.
It's not cost of the farming, it's not cost of they taking the farm off.
So.
It's not costing the labor, costing the concrete.
Green pumps different than red pumps?
Not well, I'm just telling you, when they say a hundred dollars or a hundred sixty dollars, it just costs.
You're paying for the funds anyways. This is coming out pretty soon. Hello? This is, this is coming out.
Go for it, man.
Let's get going. Let's call the question. Love that. If I bother anybody, I'm sorry. Um, uh, we know the question is no color. Right?
We're voting against the color.
Yeah, against color. All right. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, just make sure. Uh, so Carrie, we have one, uh, name. Not a clock, it's a name. All right. All right, forty-four. Discussion and or action on water utility simplified rate increase. Oh, that's from. On the webinar meeting. You had it on. Cool. All right. Uh, who's gonna do a motion? Where are you going?
Minnesota.
Get back here.
Motion.
All right.
He made a motion also.
To approve. Okay, uh, second by Hardinger. Uh, any any more on discussion? Harry, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie. Uh, discussion and or action on well number two upgrades. Uh, motion by, uh, Hushane.
Second.
Uh, second by Wyland. On the discussion is well two is where?
Uh, it's the Carrie well.
I said, not that twenty-five grand you get from elders, right? We're not rehashing that up. No, this is totally different. Yeah. They say elders come back for twenty-five grand. No?
No, yes, not Ellis.
Okay, Ellis, I mean, okay. All right, got it. All right.
Are any of those wells or the pump orders like high efficiency? Do you have an option for that?
Yeah. That one had a gift installed. Yeah.
There are.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay, sorry. Questions? All right, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie. Uh, forty-six, discussion and or action on increasing number of tourism commission members. I think Pam or Keith did a little homework on this. And, uh, Keith, then you wanna just do your homework? Uh, so currently we have five people on. And we have two. Uh, finance people off. And we have, uh, let's see, we have Dino Corvino and we have the hotelier, right? Yep, and then you and I and and Dave Timmell. Okay, it's five. And what is your little homework?
So there's purpose of the statue as part of the ordinance. And then the statue. Uh. It states that tour of the commission, you can provide the four to six members. Let's say seven. It says four to six.
I know.
So. Uh, that it's, you know, even four, five or six, but it's seven. Or three.
And and I asked you to check the hotelier if he's in that six or she. And that hotelier is in that four, five or six.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so where where this is coming from is on the night in April or the evening in April, when, um, I was doing all the appointments. And, uh, when I went into tourism, I was on tourism because that's just how it always was with finance along with, um. Uh, Barb and then the other members on there. Um, Jamie, just if you all remember, Jamie said, hey, I'd like to be on tourism still. And I'm thinking, okay, fine, I'll come to the meetings anyway. I'm kind of loud anyway, so whatever. So I said, yes, we move and then we appointed that. Well, Thursday night. Uh, the thirteenth last week, we reverted back to the way it was. And now we're up for tonight to add one person, so. Um, uh, we can do. Different things, but it's it is gonna be six, so I think that means I get two votes. So.
I don't think we should have any number.
Mm-hmm.
That makes for. Be tricky. You should have an odd number of. Yeah. And if we didn't do it, I still think what the person should be from the finance.
But what does it say in there as far as?
It doesn't. I don't.
Right, I know, I know, but but you know, Corvino was added for tourism. I guess I've always seen the two trustees on the tourism. And then it's always been kind of a different makeup all the rest of the way. Like, so Dino, if we had an opening, I think I asked Dino. No, I thought I put Dino on for parks first. Then I asked him, do you wanna be on tourism? And then who's the other person? John. So we have to have a hotelier on, so.
I was I was a proponent of having more involved in tourism finance people. The finance, the people who had a financial aid for. Tourism work. So a lot of people who are knowledgeable about the tourism industry or or at least interested, like, you know, that's why I really encourage so much other than finance. Not much.
Other than finance or including finance?
Other than finance. Besides the board trustees, I didn't want to start repeating of our finance.
Oh, I see. Oh, so you're saying actually not on finance.
Not on finance.
I don't think the.
Or more.
On finance, I believe that's totally have to be, of course.
Okay. Okay.
I guess I I would recommend.
Anybody else?
I I just don't see why we can't have change. And from what Jessica said, I think she would be more.
Can you have a non-voting member only to break the tie of the vice president is? And so could President Woney sit on it? Maybe, but not be a voting member unless there's a tie to break.
Well, I I I'm pretty sure myself that I would make sure that we would not have a tie with six. I mean, it's kind of like saying, okay, we gotta, we, you know, we can't end up like this, people, so let's rethink this. And I I it's pretty close to a majority vote. I I it's very rare that you have one or two that dissent.
Of course.
On tourism. Yes, I mean, so knowing that it would not move and you would get, you'd grant no money. That's somebody that might be deserving of it. I think that would make somebody switch. Yeah, so. I I really have no issue. I I have no issue. Um. With the, um, Barb thinks that you go to five. Any thoughts down here? Hushane? You okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, if you go to five, then you're a odd number.
Mm-hmm.
But I think six doesn't make sense. I don't know why they say.
I know, that's why I thought the hotelier. Any more down here? Any more discussion?
I'm adding six.
Okay.
I make a motion to, um, keep it at five.
Second. Uh, motion on the table by Barb for keeping it at five. Hushane has a second for five. Any more discussion? Uh. Harry, no more discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. So we have four opposed and three ayes.
Who opposed?
Uh, opposably Maloney, Wyland, Hardinger and. What's it? Minnesota. Minnesota, I do. All right, so looking for another motion to see if we could pass this.
We're gonna try to go versus.
Yeah, well, the four said no, so.
Yeah.
The math works. So so Hardinger has a motion for six and when the second comes in, so no. Any more in the discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One aye. But Hushane, what do you?
I said aye. You know, six or.
Yeah, okay, so it doesn't matter. Okay.
The one reason I said five, like even.
Yep, it's for the voting. Yep, for the voting. Yep.
Then you don't have to go six for somebody else to go.
So then the, um, it passes with one decision.
So we need to appoint that person tonight.
Uh. Oh, I'll have it on the agenda. Yep. I'll have it on next. I'll have it on before the next tourism meeting, that's for sure.
The ordinance is a three to five.
No, he says, he said forty-six. Oh, or new ones. Okay. Yeah, I got it. Okay.
The old ordinance was five.
Yeah, okay.
We have the main doors.
Yep. Right. Uh, let's see, we are now in, uh, forty-seven. Let's open up the whole damn village. Discussion and or action on UTV accessible vehicle routes. Who has this one?
We talked about a little bit.
Okay.
I'm interested to consider. Put together a version to shoot that out. I might be a lot of things. Take a lot of action on this.
So you're thinking leaving it alone? Is is there up? Is there some routes that we're supposed to look at?
There's some that.
I mean, I I saw some. Yeah, yeah, some last year we did. Yeah.
Is that full center site?
Yes. But nobody's asking for changes right now, are they? I know you're getting.
I'm getting emails.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. He he's going no crossings on Schofield Avenue.
Right.
I I I work up in Merrill and they're everywhere.
Yeah.
And there's no seatbelts, no helmets, no nothing. Uh, if I'm in a car, I have to have a seatbelt. If I'm on a motorcycle in the state, I have to have a helmet. I don't kind of get it. I just don't get it. But they're everywhere. You you know that, right? I mean, they're everywhere. They can go everywhere.
It's it's a bar mile.
Yep, yeah.
If they're being stopped or whatever, I can figure it. It's not the same as the voter driver.
So it's the same thing as Soulville too, right? Yeah.
And the other problem you're gonna have is if you just have people who want to ride residential areas around and around.
Yeah.
And they could do that.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be. And those that don't want it.
So.
Yeah.
Across Schofield Avenue.
He 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 wants that. He wants certain access across Schofield, not just Willie Mill. Not everywhere.
I think the intent behind it is getting access to get all over the village, right, free. Or access.
Not to drive around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Access to a gas station or rent a driver car. I'm making sure the people, the places and not all your work. I think if I mean, all some of the other, um, cities are really bad. Merrill did, you know, Ryan Under did. See, they're gonna. There's a room where.
I don't know. I remember on our discussion, it's very good access as much possible to get out of here, so we can.
Trails, but that's what pretty bright and where.
Well, that's a concern about always, but it's about kids. It's about people driving these things to residential areas.
As long as they're heading out like a Soulville too, same. They're trying to have a, let's say, trailer. Yeah.
But if you just open up the village, they can drive around a lot.
I don't think opening up the village is the answer. I would not be. Okay, but I think some further discussion and and not just here. We need to get some.
Outside.
Some outside input.
Uh, there are a few things we need to consider if we're not. Even about. People.
Okay.
That's one discussion.
Are we looking to do that? So we have more information?
That's fine.
Okay, who's gonna take?
Just table the return.
We have the what?
Postpone.
Postpone. Okay. We're good for a motion to postpone discussion and action on UTV accessible vehicle routes until the, um, August fourth of two. Second by Corrin, second by Pinstoll. Any more in discussion? Hearing none. All of you in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie. Motion to move to close session.
Miss, can I? We do staff referrals importantly.
Yeah, sure, please. Staff referrals. Uh, attorney referrals. Hearing none. None. That's done.
That's a bonus.
Staff referrals. Uh, Jim.
Yeah.
Okay, let's start backwards over here. Hushane? None? All right, Steve?
Michael, I I was online the other night and I saw, I don't know what what the piece, I just thought it would help you guys with your utility crew. I saw that there's some like new automatic watering puffers that are on the market. Looking at those at all.
Sorry, like.
Yeah, they like it. They hook onto them and they stay there. You can lock them on and then you can control them remotely. I'm not sure what the purpose is. I just thought it might be something to make us more efficient, so. Might be something we're looking into.
Or no nozzles, certain nozzles that you could water some as long across the street. Pretty cool. Without blasting it all over the house. Just if they could give certain sections of the yard.
What the thing with the giants?
Yeah.
But you don't throw the shoe and not apply. Somebody should get out.
I don't, I don't. And 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 some serious pressure coming out of there.
A lot of those are used generally on like dead ends to sort of, you know, you have a system that has water state and water issues. They flush the dead end on a regular schedule and you don't have to run around through the system.
A lot of someone's walking.
Yeah, no kidding. And it comes on. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Find them in the wind.
Wait, they come back.
All right, so there's, that's a staff referral. Uh, Barb, anything? Maloney has none. Jamie? Negative? Uh, Hardinger? No. And Jim?
Sorry. Look at amending this special event permit to include provisions to encourage staff to make residents aware. Of the issuance of any such permit and potential impacts by posting the electronic notice on the village website, social media, announcing contact.
Okay. So that's your referral? Okay, has the referral been received?
Does that have to do with ordinance change too?
Special.
We're talking special rights.
Whatever used.
Okay, well, the intent is temporary use for.
Okay.
With the the tenth thing in your law, whatever that, whatever bucket that falls into.
That's.
Perfect.
You already said that.
Yeah, we couldn't do it.
Yeah, but I couldn't do it yet.
You couldn't do it because we didn't have it. Oh, you didn't?
She's doing it anyway.
So she's doing it anyway. Yep, all right, there we go. Ah, any more referrals? Hearing none. None. And now are we going? Little cap, we go back to the closed session part?
You're the bar.
I'm fine. Okay.
Use your bars first.
Uh, let's do.
One comment?
Yep.
Huge. I'm sure everything. It is about disaster. We gotta be in the twelve. Some issues.
Yeah.
More. Let's see. The last eight more hours.
So, and it's still happening.
It's still.
There's still people squatting there. This gal just moved out, thought she was going to a good place. I I can only see in from when I'm at treadmill looking at cars and it actually looks kind of nice. Is it rough in there?
It's hard.
Oh, is it rough in the water?
Yes.
Oh, wow. Can you drive in here? I thought it was cold. Oh.
We were there last night, your last week of chiseling.
Oh, wow. So. So, you know, so I know this is a private park, okay? And I know it's gonna bring us a lot of crap, okay? And and I know Barbara and I were just having a little private conversation here that it's, um, private. We can't go into it, do stuff. But is it, wouldn't it just behoove us to go in there? I mean, we offer this big item pickup all over the damn place. Yet we don't go in here because it's private.
Well, there are some ways that.
Yeah.
We could just, and I don't like.
But it's, I don't even.
Either summary or payment or non-summary payment, which is exactly what we did on the court where we knew. You have to get certain time and basically a court order they have to provide to you. In order for you not to go in there with that. But that, I mean, ordinance got there.
I mean, we're cutting lawns. I mean, I I think we've cut that lawn on Mesker, uh, we're not. We're at Houseburn Town. I know, but we're, aren't we kind of planning towards? Yeah, so can't we charge still water? I mean, for, and we go in and actually mow? Not cut it like hay and leave it up ready to be baled. I mean, actually mow it, pick the garbage up. And beautify it a little bit for these residents. I feel horrible for the good residents.
Tears, but yes.
Okay.
There, the way the law ordinance is written, we have it specific to a five-day notice. If you don't do it, it's going on as a special assessment.
All right.
Right, because grass grows fast under.
I I I think some of the citations, the some of the citations, some some of the citations are just gonna kind of laugh and scoff at. But when we start building them back, that's a whole other story. Because now we're actually trying to beautify this place a little bit, make it a little bit better and like this gal. I mean, can you imagine her kids going over there? Probably don't even want her to move there. Well, I guess if the other part was worse, they were probably happy. Um, yeah. No, I mean, I, I mean, I saw some rental, like three hundred dollars. I don't know if that's for the whole this morning. Okay, and those three hundred dollars.
That's right.
I don't know if that's, if that's owned rental or not owned rental. I don't, I have no idea.
The city Schofield's owner didn't pay. They had to take them to court to get you a hundred twenty dollars in back taxes, so just be cautious that.
Are are we up to the taxes? Okay.
Some of those people's citations, uh, two hundred or two thousand dollars fine is back.